Good evening, this is the Board of Selectmen's meeting for the 7th of May. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business is the acceptance and correction, if necessary, of the minutes from the 30th of April.
One second. If there's any discussion, let's have it.
Here's where I'll hand you with it. So, I'll call the vote. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to announcements. I'll start off. This concerns the Glen Lake waterfront, and we have an ordinance there for residential parking. The Police Department announces parking prohibition dates for Glen Lake Boat Launch Waterfront Area Ordinance will be in effect beginning the 15th of May, and it's between the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Parking along Elm Street in the area of the Boat Launch and the Glen Lake School is restricted to Gulfstown residents only, and they also have to be -- have to display a transfer station sticker affixed to their vehicle. The designated trailer parking area will remain open to anyone with a trailer attached to their vehicle without restriction year-round. There is no trespassing from 9:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. in the morning. Alcohol, as usual, alcohol beverages are prohibited at Glen Lake Waterfront along with any glass bottles. The above restrictions are posted at the Glen Lake Boat Launch Waterfront Area. Second announcement concerns invasive pests. And residents may see purple prism traps resembling a box kite throughout New Hampshire on ash trees this year as part of a National Emerald Ash Bora Survey, which is being conducted with -- through the help of state and private agencies. The purple traps are hung in ash trees in all 10 counties of New Hampshire. The traps do not lure the ash bora into an area but are used as detection tools to determine if they are presently in the survey area. The sooner the ash bora is detected, the more options are available to manage the pest. The trap has a sticky, non-toxic glue that captures all sorts of insects. They attract the ash bora because there's -- one lure smells like ash leaves, the other like the bark of ash trees. The traps will be monitored throughout the summer and removed in the fall. They pose no threat to humans, pets, wildlife. However, the glue is extremely sticky. If you happen to find a fallen trap on the ground, record its number and tag, and you call the following number, 802-828-4546. Leave your name, number, and trap number, and somebody will return your call. Selectman Adams, bring us up the date on Mass Road, please.
I'd be happy to. The work on Mass Road Drainage Project has been continuing in spite of some of the rainy weather last week. Three hundred and fifty linear feet of pipe and two drainage structures were installed. Not all the paving was completed due to the rain. It's scheduled to be done Tuesday, that'd be tomorrow of this week. With the exception of one manhole that may not need to be installed near the intersection of DeSauld near Street and a few minor items, the drainage work from Hannaford's to the Manchester Town Line is complete. There's pipe yet that needs to be inspected, we're waiting for a pipe camera for the intersection of Fox Street that may need to be changed. Also have a couple of pipes are probably going to slip line instead of replacing them. And again, the work's been a little bit slower this week due to the weather, and also they discovered a buried phone cable line on the road that wasn't previously identified. The pipework remaining is mostly down in the Lynchville Park Road area of Mass Road. It's a couple of drainage structures to repair and replace between Hannaford's and Shaw's, which will get done this week. And currently working on scheduling the curbing contractor, some of the curbing has to be reset as it was disturbed during the rebuilding of the sidewalks. And again, if anyone has questions, they can call the DPW Department directly. Thank you.
Are there any other announcements?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
I did attend the Eagle Court of Honor yesterday. The Board authorized me to go and present the proclamation. It was a very nice ceremony. David Ricard was the young man's name. He was tickled pink that he had a day named in his honor. There are a lot of dignitaries there, a lot of military personnel, a lot of donations to Troop 135. His Eagle Scout project was very interesting and very innovative, unlike some of the ones that I've seen. He actually worked at the county nursing home with the residents there to construct planting beds, a potting shed, or potting bench, I should say, and worked to create some paved walkways to the pavilion areas so that the residents can actually go out, put their hands in the dirt, get dirty, plant tomatoes and herbs, as well as flowers. And they are tickled pink, the residents love it, so it's a resounding success. So, it was a very nice day, all in all. Thank you.
Congratulations to you. And then I have one final announcement. Each week, the Town Administrative Office, these two ladies over here, prepare a meeting packet for the Board of Selectmen, and it contains all of the background information for each public session that's on our agenda. For example, tonight, it's a 119-page document. Whereas in the past, this meeting packet was electronically available only to the Selectmen through email, and that would be on late Friday afternoon, the same document is now available to the public through the town's website, also on late Friday. By accessing the meeting packet, the public can now view in detail the same background information that we view here at the Board, the information charts, and other documents upon which we're acting. If you're viewing this session live through web streaming, you could also open up another window and scroll down through the document at the same time that we're viewing it. To see the meeting packet on the town's homepage, you would select Minutes, and then select Selectment, and from the following window, select Meeting Pockets. Right now, there's only one meeting packet there, but in the future, you select the appropriate date. And please bear in mind that the document is five to seven million bytes, and depending on the speed of your Internet service, it may take some time to download. No further announcements. It's now 6:10, and we're open for public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the Selectmen on issues and concerns for three or four minutes.
I have something I'd like to say. Would you like me to come?
Please, the microphones are there for you, and would you indicate your name and where you live?
Yep. My name's Joan Stevens. I live at 50 Stinson Road in Gulfstown, and I'm here tonight to talk about something that I heard about very recently this afternoon, about a push to possibly eliminate -- excuse me, eliminate plowing of churches in Gulfstown. And I'd like to speak in favor of continuing that service. And I do so as a member of St. Matthew's Church, the Episcopal Church in Gulfstown. I'm also on the vestry there, and I'm a junior warden there. In addition to that, I volunteer for the Community Clothing Center and the Gulfstown Network Food Pantry, and St. Matthew's Outreach Committee. I really feel that the churches, all the churches in town, do an awful lot for the town. We work, for instance, with Evy Redmond, your welfare officer, on helping people who are in need because of the economic crisis right now. We have a history of serving, doing a lot of things for the community, and there are things that are coming up in the future. We've recently started a program for teens to help them with drug and alcohol problems, whether they have them themselves or whether family members have them. The things that I just mentioned are ongoing, and there are plans for the future. We have worked on the youth forum for Crispin's House with Making It Happen Coalition, and just done so many things that I think we don't get paid for, and we certainly don't expect to get paid for. But I believe in my heart that if we weren't doing that, that there would be a lot more reliance on town services for things like that. I do know that we passed this year at town meeting or at the deliberative session, and then in the vote, funding for the American Red Cross, and I certainly don't mean to belittle that because I think that's really important. But Crispin's House did not get funded, nor do any of the services of the clergy association of the churches. So, I'd really urge you to, if it comes to that point, to consider continuing plowing for the churches. That would be something that we would have to pay for, and it would impact what we're able to do for the public now. And I would also like to put into the public record, if I may do so, a letter from Reverend William Exner.
Okay. Thank you, Joan. Can I ask a question? Please.
Thank you very much, that's most helpful. I know, I for one, sort of inherently knew there was a lot of community things that churches, synagogues, and other houses of worship did for the community. It helps to know specifically what some of those things are. Are they detailed in that letter?
They are detailed in that letter, and the one thing that I think was missing was the fact that we collaborate with Evy Redmond. We prepared a document within the past year that's about 14 pages long that looks at services that people who are kind of down and out because of the economy might need to take advantage of, and how to do that. And the priests and others of us are available to help people, you know, figure out how to make it through the tough times.
Thank you, that's most helpful.
Thank you. Anything else?
You could hand it off to me.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. 6:14, we'll close public comment. And the next item is our Assistant Town Administrator, Derek. You're briefing us, Derek, on the New England Community Planning Grant.
Mr. Chairman, the Planning and Zoning Administrator, Brian Rose, had planned to be here, as well as Tony Martz, but they were going based on the agenda. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to go over the social media.
Please, skip to Item 2, Social Media, please.
Thank you very much. In your packets was a draft social media that I drew up with the assistance of our IT Office here, and also with feedback from the different departments. The only department that I did not solicit feedback from was the library, as they had already drafted a policy with their library trustees. But this social media policy is really driven to, so the town can start using social media as another medium to deliver one-way communication and information to citizens and constituents. It's really not designed to be a designated public forum where comments for the public to post at this point, but it does provide for reexamination in the future, should this Board like to go down that path.
Members of the Board would like to ask Derek any questions. Derek, do you have any idea of how many municipalities or cities have a social media policy or are even involved with social media?
No, sir, I don't. I did not research that information. Most of the examples that I was able to find and that were provided at the LGC training are communities that have not taken these precautions and kind of gone right into it and the problems they may face. But I did not look to see the number of communities that have done this.
Thank you. I remember this last year attending the Local Government Center Conference in Manchester, and they had a seminar there on social media. And the bulk of that discussion was, how do you manage the -- if it was two-way communication, how do you manage the communications coming back? And in those cases, you needed a real strict set of guidance as to how to manage them because you're, at some point, you may feel inclined to delete comments submitted from the public, and that gets on touchy grounds.
Also, the right-to-know law was another issue. As it is public information, and how do you capture that and save that?
Bring up an interesting point. If a department head were to post an announcement on this one-way push of information, is there an obligation to preserve that screen?
Not the screen, but the paper copies kept.
Paper copy of the announcement. Is that mentioned in here?
It doesn't go into specifics on what. It does talk about any content that is removed will need to be maintained. I did not tackle the right-to-know issue.
Yeah, a follow-up on that. Is there any timeframe that the records have to be retained, or is it indefinite?
It depends on the record, and that's where we look to RSA 33A, which is the Municipal Records Retention Law.
And what's the timeframe that we have to retain these?
Depends on the subject.
It depends on the subject and what type of record it is.
Okay, well, when I'm trying to get a handle, trying to get it on the standard, are we looking at five years, seven years, 10, 15, 20?
Some could be indefinitely, some could be as few, you know, as little as one year.
So, then we're getting into situation of records retention like we have to do with the Police Department?
Yes.
And then we could, in 20 years from now, still be responsible for archiving documents?
Yes.
Where we gonna keep them? Any suggestions?
Our Records Retention Committee that meets monthly is working on those issues as well.
Derek, the RSA was what, 33?
33A.
So, by this policy, we would put in place the ability to, for a department, to establish a social link, media. The department head would still, according to the policy, present the plan to this Board, exactly the intent and who's in charge?
It also provides, Mr. Chairman, for a designee if you wish to designate that responsibility.
Selectman Gross.
Currently, do you know if we disable social media sites for our employees?
Yes, they are.
Would those sites still be inaccessible to employees if this policy were to go forward?
The IT Office has advised and commented that they would like to limit access as much as possible. You are going to have the people that will be maintaining the sites and who are designated to maintain the sites will need that access. But their concern is to limit that access as much as possible to department head and potentially, you know, one designee, they don't want to see.
Can I ask, do you know why?
When, as you access those social media sites, you open up to malware, viruses, those kind of issues. It's also a default setting on all our filter settings because many businesses, you know, governmental agencies see those as time suckers potentially, those sites.
Selectman Adams. David, I mean, I'm sorry. Derek, it talks about the department head of the designee monitoring the content, ensure adherence with the policy, restrict or remove content. Do we have any idea how much effort that entails, how many hours, man-hours, how much time it's going to take, under realizing and recognizing that we've got limited manpower available to us? And, you know, if they're spending an inordinate amount of time monitoring these sites, what other tasks is it taking them away from?
I think it would probably be dependent on each department and how much they use it. If you have a department that is posting once a week or a couple times, it's going to be less. But if you've got, whether it's, you know, if there's somebody at Town Hall posting public notices and using that as an additional avenue, yeah, you're going to have that time drain. So, it's really going to be dependent on how much this medium is used.
Then I think it would be valuable to survey some of the surrounding communities, find out, first of all, if they have a policy like this, and second of all, how much resources does it consume, how much time does it take? I think that would be interesting information, no?
Yeah, and I think the presentation at LGC kind of gave an idea. The lawyers that were giving the presentation, one was charged with her company's social media page, and she said, no, every morning, start off the morning with 15 minutes or, you know, to review, because they were allowing the postings and the comments to review those, and then at the end of the day, would be doing the same. As we're not, at this point, allowing comments, it wouldn't be as frequent. But I would think because it's such an immediate avenue to post information out there that you, the department heads or their designee would want to check it at least once a day to make sure whoever has access to it is posting appropriately.
You're talking about a half an hour a day on that order of magnitude, not hours a day, but fractions of an hour?
Again, yeah. I think it's something probably at the end of the day, yeah, fractions of an hour, but that's every day. If you open it up to comments in the future, then that grows exponentially.
Yeah, understandable, yeah.
Or if our Town Administrator were, depending on the type of social media, if she was the friend, you know, for a recipient of these push messages, you know, your case suit, you'd be immediately receiving all those messages from all the departments as they're being posted. That may prompt you to, that's good in one aspect because you're seeing what the other departments are posting, but on the other hand, it's another 15 seconds out of look at the media or if it's coming through to your computer.
I also want to point out, I sent the web statistics to all of you last week, and there were like 8,000 hits on our website. So, and Derek, correct me if I'm wrong, but our website has the capacity to push messages out now, right? We push out the EDC newsletter?
We do have the ability to do e-blasts with, through emails, through different, there's also the Police Department, DPW uses Nixle, and then there also provides for the RSS feeds where citizens can subscribe to certain pages to see when it gets updated. So, those abilities are there.
Selectman Gross.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen a lot of companies go towards using social media, not simply just to post information, and I think that it could be a good, a very good tool for us is if people like a particular department, or they can just not just like the town of Gulfstown, they could just like an individual department, whether it be the library or the Parks Department, et cetera. And it gives the opportunity, we use the case to say the Fire Department, if we have a particularly high probability of a forest fire, you know, the chief can put out something on, say, Facebook or Twitter saying, be careful, it's a very high chance of fire today, make sure you obtain a permit, you can't burn today, et cetera. If it's libraries having an event that, you know, they can put something up on their social media, they're not going to get hits back, but they're just simply going to alert people. And now, a lot of people have these smartphones, so you're going to get a quick message on your account that says, hey, by the way, the library is having an event. So, I think it's, I'm not concerned about that, and I think the recommendation is a sound one, is that it really, it's too cumbersome and challenging and legally, there's so many minefields there that we can't have that interaction. But certainly to push it, it'll work just like Nixle does, and if not better, because a lot more people are on, you know, Twitter and Facebook than they are on Nixle. So, I think it's a good idea.
Anyone know how many friends? I know the library has a Facebook page. Does anyone know how many friends they have that they push out?
I'm a friend of the, I can share. I can see how many friends they have.
You can?
No, I think I can.
Just don't text us a message.
I'm just looking in comparison to the fact that we get 8,000 hits a day on the website.
Oh, no, no, they don't get anything.
Well, he's doing his research.
No, they don't get anything close to that.
Yeah, I have a question since you brought up the library. So, the library sends things out on Facebook, is that correct?
Oh, yeah.
Now, are there items that they put out that they have to retain for the right-to-know law?
Sure they do.
I would say potentially. I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to look under the records retention, but I mean, it is going to be a governmental communication.
Do they do that currently?
I don't know what they're.
It's typically things that are already saved in paper, like they push out about their programs, while they already publish their thing about programs. I think it's just redundancy in getting the message out.
Well, I mean, I just have a concern that stuff that goes out, you get a department like the library, I mean, I'm not criticizing the library or anything, but the library doesn't necessarily have to deal with the right-to-know law except for the trustee meetings, which is basically a function of the trustees. But stuff that they put out, if it's subject to the right-to-know law, I mean, how do people become aware, educate themselves that something that they're putting out is subject to the right-to-know law, and they have to retain this maybe for perpetuity?
I see your concern, and it is something, like I said, our Records Retention Committee has been trying to tackle, and with participation from all the departments, and we're now looking at potentially including electronic information in that as well. So, it's kind of, it's not, it's, we're working parallel to this.
It seems like theirs is interactive, from what it looks like, so.
Yeah, it's my understanding they do allow posting.
They allow posts, yeah. And there's 382 likes, I don't really know.
Oh.
There could be, maybe that's not disclosed, or.
Would the Board like to keep this open or make a motion this evening?
I mean, I want to, if there's something that Selectman Adams would like to feel more comfortable making a decision, then, you know, I have no problem. This is kind of a first read anyway for us, so it's been, we've been waiting on it, and I'd rather have, you know, I'd rather have Colas, you know, satisfied that we've answered his questions, so I don't think we have to rush into it tonight.
We can hold off. I mean, I'd like to see, in regards to what Philly talked about, see other communities around, you know, ask the question, you know, are they, do they have this up and running already, or?
And if so, do they have a policy?
Yeah.
Derek, find one community out of the 300 and something communities to do this and allow us to know, please.
Yes, sir.
And your answer better not, we're the first.
No, it is my understanding, other towns and municipalities and cities have tackled it.
Selectman Davison.
How in-depth their policy is, I don't know.
Yeah, but I'd also like to find out also where department heads stand on this, because each department's going to be responsible or how we're going to handle this for whatever they put out that is subject to the right-to-know law. And one of the concerns is, you know, things change. Right-to-know law, things change, things happen, there are court decisions that change the way that happened, and not every department is actively aware of those types of changes, such as administration. We're more in tune with that, and, you know, I have a concern that things start getting, you know, you mentioned. I have a concern that things start getting, you know, you, you mentioned 15 minutes in the morning, 15 minutes in the afternoon to look at this stuff, that's two and a half, that's a potential of two and a half hours.
What would you be looking at? That's if your posts, yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's, we're not receiving comment back. The time that's being spent is pushing a message out.
Okay, then if you're just pushing the, the message out, the reason why I said both of them, because I heard that the library receives posts, it's two-way from the library, so we do have a department that's doing two-way currently, we might have more, I don't know. So the concern is, is the amount of time, as was pointed out, we're on limited resources, we have everybody working, multitasking, and there really aren't enough hours, and that's why there are a lot of things that aren't getting done, and sometimes people get frustrated and, because things, uh, uh, what the priorities are, but, but my point being is, administration is the one that is mostly on top of what has to be retained. You know, these things become routine, like everything else, so they start getting their messages out, let's say on Monday morning or Friday night, you know, everything starts getting repetitive, it becomes a routine, six months down the road, I've been doing it like that for six, for six months, all of a sudden something changes, some department heads don't even know, and how are we going to do the record retention?
Selectman Gross.
You know, there's no doubt that it will be different, but I want to try to reemphasize the, the true benefits of this. You know, in the past, our way of, of trying to notifying the community, and even in, in the law right now, if you have a meeting, you're, you're putting up three notices in public, and that's the way, if you think about it way, way, way back, you know, you had, that's how you did it. Now you have the opportunity, I, I, I'd like to actually commend the library for really how they embark on their technology, whether it be using Facebook or Twitter or, you know, GTV and others, but in one fell swoop, if you're trying to remind people that the transfer station is closed on a Memorial Day weekend on a Saturday, even though you post that notice up on, on the board, that people don't drive by Elm Street all the time, and just a quick, a quick two-sentence, just a reminder that we're not open this particular Saturday, you know, that, that helps our community, so we can spread the message about so many things that we want to do, and I know communications is one of our big goals, this is push and it allows people voluntarily, if they want to be, you know, a friend or whatever of, of the town or the department, to get that information, so I, I think, and, and we can do it for almost the time that it takes the person to key it in. I think we'll save time and energy, because if we push a lot of our information as opposed to having to get phone calls a lot, or respond to emails, things of that nature, I think at the end we'll, we'll save, save time.
And, selectman Adams?
Yeah, I want to, I agree, but I just want to be clear, I, I think it's a good thing, I think we need to take advantage of modern technologies that are available to us. In fact, that's consistent with one of the goals we developed recently, and that was identify additional ways to get information out to the public, certainly this is one of those ways. I just want to have some better concrete data and numbers to get my hands around so I understand what the impact is on our limited resources, that, although I certainly support the concept, I think it's a great idea.
And I'll wrap up, I'm also in favor of it, and I think you have some information to bring back to us.
Yes, sir.
We'll pick up this discussion at a future agenda.
Thank you very much, and.
Mr. Martz is here, and Mr. Rose is here, so are they going to join you? The second item for Derek to present is the Concerns of the Community Planning Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the, this is in regards to the New Hampshire Community Planning Grant, which is a program that's being administered by New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, and it provides grants in one and two-year periods for communities to hire consultants, and it is a requirement that you hire a consultant, to do regulatory reviews of your zoning ordinance or subdivision regulations, and Brian and Tony and I went to the workshop last week and got all the details about it, and the application wouldn't be due until June 15th, and Brian, Brian and I have been having conversations about, you know, what we'd like to see potentially going forward with an application, but we did want to bring this information forward to you, and, and it's really to, the purpose and use of it is to promote and enhance local environmental, economic, and social sustainability, so it, it looks at transportation, it looks at housing choices, you know, walkable communities, all, all those sorts of things, and we see this as an opportunity to take a, you know, whether it's a specific location in town and study the regulations there to make it a more sustainable community in the future.
Any concerns or comments from the board?
Selectman Navaz.
Yeah, I had a couple of things here underlined that I'm trying to look at, and one of them you touched on, sustainable community, can you explain what that is?
I'll go with that, Derek's giving me the look. Sustainability is kind of a, a mix of trying to focus on, you know, how people live, work, and play together, it's, it's trying to be green, it's using the environment in a, an efficient way, it's doing all, it's, I mean, the, the broad definition of it is trying to preserve the, the, the community so that we can enjoy it today and our, our kids can enjoy it in the future, and so, you know, it's kind of creating a way of life that people would be doing their best to, you know, live and work and play and, you know, not, not use their cars all the time or, you know, trying to avoid sprawl, I mean, there's a lot of different definitions of what sustainability really is, but it's essentially just trying to improve our way of life that, that, that we have here, so.
Hold on, please.
Yeah, on that, what is it that we've done in the past to get to where we are as far as planning, I mean, we have a master plan, we worked with Southern New Hampshire Planning for many, many years since they've been in existence, we have adopted zoning in the town, what is it that we've had that is not sustainable?
Well, I mean, I think part of this project would be to, you know, do some further evaluation of exactly what we need to do, but our, our master plan has goals and visions of what, what we'd like to do as a, as a town to make our town a better place to live and, and work and play, and honestly, you know, there's, there are different things such as, you know, better economic vitality, you know, preservation of open space in a, in a better manner, whatever, whatever that thing might be that's in our, in our master plan, I think there's always opportunities for improving and, you know, going with the latest trends of, of what's been done in, in other cities and towns, and it's not to say that what we have done is necessarily bad, but, you know, I think we're, we're of the type of people that we always look to improve whatever we have, so, you know, that's what we'd be doing, and in this case, I mean, we, we've been thinking about, you know, the, the area of town that's, Penardville, and what, you know, what can be done in that area to make it better, I, I think that's been a, an age-long discussion for Goffstown and, you know, it.
I, you're presenting the opportunity that the grant is, has been announced, you're presenting that opportunity to us this evening, I take it you probably have a specific grant idea in mind that you're going to come back to us, Mr. Martz?
Well, to follow up on, on what Brian is saying, especially with respect to the Penardville area, and, and I'm proposing and soliciting support, of course, from your planning staff, but most importantly, from the selectmen as a matter of policy to identify Penardville as a place where this particular grant would be the most useful. In terms of that, you know, this developing concept of sustainable communities and sustainable planning, I see it, as far as Penardville's concerned, protecting the neighborhood that we have there and ensuring that it doesn't become a South Willow Street or a, an area where there is not the kind of residential infrastructure and diversity, as well as business infrastructure and diversity, that we'll turn it into something that, that we're really not happy with over, over time. So sustainable planning is, you know, the latest buzzword, in some towns, they call it performance zoning, form-based zoning, there's all kinds of things like that, but it's really beginning to integrate the fact that we have businesses and residences in mixed-use zones that we need to have access to not just with automobiles, but also bicycles, pedestrians, mass transit, all of those things, and, and protecting the community itself. I think that when we look at our takeaways in so many areas of town, in terms of the master plan, in terms of corridor studies we've done, in terms of other work that has been done and is being done, Penardville is where that stuff is lacking, from the Manchester Line up the Mass Road Corridor to the 114, 114A intersection, this is an area where I would propose we can get a two-year, $50,000 grant to have that community assess where it is and begin to assess where it's going over the next 10 or 20-plus years. The goal of the grant program is to have a regulatory end result, meaning they want to see the towns that take the money come up with a plan to change zoning or change building codes or do something that has an end product that they can go back to HUD and say, this is what we've done and this is what it's going to promote. But I think being involved for the Goffstown Industrial Corporation, we spent a good deal of time raising the level of, at least, people's ability to see the 114 corridor at St. Ace and the old Bedford Computer Site, the county land has much higher visibility today, they've recently, of course, finished their planning charrette in that respect. What's missing, and, and we've done a lot in, in the village, in terms of, Main Street does a lot, there's a lot going on here, the, the roundabout planning and things like this, Penardville is where we really need, I think, long-term assistance, and the interesting thing here is, it's not necessarily work that we do ourselves, because we've all been involved for a long time and we know, Penardville's impossible, every time it comes up, it's like, no, we'll never get it passed, it's way too complicated, here's a chance to bring in third-party consultants to say, you know, we have experience with this kind of environment, here are some things you might not have thought about that might be helpful to help develop that area. I'm encouraged by things like the Abington Square project, that is a mixed-use type of project on a very, very small scale, if you could duplicate that throughout that corridor, at least initially in a couple of other spots, you really change the character of, of the entire neighborhood.
One of the nice things about this grant, I'm sorry, one of the nice things about this grant too is that the match requirement, while it's a 20% match, or 25% match, town, cities and towns are only required to put up cash for a quarter of that 25%, so it really ends up being just over $3,000 for a $50,000 grant that we would have to find some cash for, and I think in talking to Tony, you know, it sounds like they would be willing to work out some, some matching funds from the Industrial Corporation and other sources possibly, but, you know, even, even if that weren't possible and $3,000 could somehow be found, I think, in, in our limited budget, even though I know it's, it's a tight budget this year, so, you know, that's, that's one of the plus sides about going for this grant, so.
Selectman Navaz.
Yeah, thank you. I have also a question and a concern, on the page A9, we talk about the vision for New Hampshire's Future 2030, the fourth bullet down, which is to foster more compact development, and the reason I have the concern about that, okay, and I understand well about Abington Square, and I have to tell you that I'm very disappointed with Abington Square, as a selectman and a member on the planning board, when Abington Square was first brought to us. I have several concerns, and this is probably not enough time at this meeting to discuss this, but Abington Square was envisioned as a commercial project to bring, help increase the commercial base, it's brought us one Rite Aid pharmacy and quite a bit more housing that was ever, ever envisioned when that project came through. My concern is that if we have more projects like Abington Square, especially with the flex zone that's just been done with the county, that we are going to have exactly what it says here, more compact development of housing in the Penardville area, where we should be concentrating on commercial and industrial, and I think that our prime area, the county land, is prime commercial industrial land, and my concern, it's not only my concern, but what people have said to me, what members of the public have said at public hearings, at the planning board, the concern with the flex zone and our zoning allows the amount of housing units that it allows, I mean, that's that back portion that was housing at the original Abington Square, when they first came in, they came in for 24, 25 units, they now have 48. My concern with Abington Square, honestly, is that they're going to come back and the lots that are expected to be commercial, they're going to come back and they're going to request that they be residential.
Phil, I think, I think one thing we don't want to do is we don't want to presuppose what a consultant is going to tell us should be done in this particular area, and we can disagree and have different interpretations of particular projects, and I think we have a consistent, you and I, sense of what we should be focused on in terms of the town overall, but Penardville, if we don't address it, is apt only to get worse, because we build in that area with variances by and large and with zoning ordinance, ordinances that are really crafted for the village or for other places. I don't think the commercial flex zone is going to work there, I don't think the village commercial district works there, I think Penardville really needs to develop as a unique area of town, and people ask me, well, what do you want to come out of it? Well, I kind of have a census to what I want, but that's not what I'm asking for, I'm asking for us to really invest in, in outsiders' look at what, what could be possible there.
And while we're on that particular list for the future of 2030, it's the, the first group of bullets, and, and selectmen Navaz have picked on one of those, about a compact development, and it's very possible Penardville is already residentially very compact compared to our, our other areas of our town, but the, the first few bullets there, conserve our working forests, well, doesn't apply, conserve, assure the availability of open space, doesn't necessarily apply there, and same thing for watersheds, drinking water, compact development, I'm sure we could continue discussing that one, but it's the other ones I'm encouraged by, Tony, it's creating safe, healthy neighborhoods, vibrant downtowns, social and economic hubs, strong locally biased, based economies, and our tradition of, in New Hampshire of neighbors helping neighbors, those are important features that could result in such a, a study.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Rose.
If I can just address the issue of creating compact development, that bullet point If I can just address the issue of creating compact development, that bullet point doesn't necessarily address the point of whether it's commercial or residential, it's addressing the point of how compact it is, and that's due to the, the cost savings that you, that you come about with when you, when you do compact development. You're saving money on a number of roads that have to be built, you're saving money on the vehicle miles that are traveled and the air emissions into the air, you're, you know, you're making it more green by doing that as well. There, there's a lot of savings that can be done by doing compact development. You're allowing people to walk instead of drive. You know, you're putting businesses close to each other, they can feed off of each other and, and become a hub. So, I mean, it, it's not necessarily always, you know, going to happen in that, in that exact way, and, you know, we're not always going to be able to control exactly what people come in and want to do, but if we can set our zoning ordinance up in a way that would, would encourage that type of development, especially in an area like Penardville where it's already got that setup for a compact type style, I mean, I think it would be important to focus on that and, and do what we can to make it better.
Selectman Adams.
I think this is a great opportunity and something that we ought to explore. You know, in the introduction, it talks about, you know, the real focus of this is on the regulatory framework. And in all my years on the planning board, we've always struggled, as you know, Brian, we've had conversations about this. What can we do with our current zoning and development regulations, the regulatory framework, to bring about change, to make it more flexible, to make it more useful, to make it more applicable to our changing community? And I think here we've got an opportunity to take advantage of some grant money, to bring in a third party with a fresh set of eyes and say, you ought to be looking at these things and bring forward some recommendations. I think this is a great opportunity. You know, as long as we can meet both the cash contribution, which is fairly minimal, as well as the match contribution, there's some significant match there, but maybe we can reach out to other groups to provide match as opposed to strictly within, you know, the town administrative.
You can do that on in-kind match, though a lot of town staff work can be put into that.
I think as long as we can demonstrate that the match is not a problem, I think it's a great opportunity, it's something we ought to pursue, so that we can have that fresh set of eyes and look at our regulatory framework and how we can modify it.
Selectman Gross.
If there is no further discussion, then I would make a motion.
I, I was at about at that point, either to end the discussion or make a motion, and go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the administration to proceed with the New Hampshire Community Planning Grant Program.
I'll second that. Is that for the Penardville area?
For the Penardville area.
Thank you.
And we also want to include Hillsborough County land?
I don't think so at this time. You know, when you look at the master plan, the master plan really talks about, one of the actual action items in the master plan is develop a Penardville master plan and the regulations to go along with it. And one of the questions, this is a, this has, this grant has two rounds. We'd be seeking a two-year, which would be both rounds, but Tony did ask the question at the workshop, if you get a two-year grant, are you precluded from getting a one-year grant in round two? They said no, so with, with that potential there being, and, and Hillsborough County just had their land rezoned to the flex zone to tie it into Tetro Drive to the 114, 114A corridor. It ties it together with that corridor. So, I mean, if you look at the Penardville zoning map, that zoning map from the Manchester line to the fire station on Plum, at the corner of Plummer Road, that has been commercial since 1961 and there have been no changes to that zoning map. There's been tweaks in what you can do in a commercial zone and setbacks and, but that, that commercial zone has been the same ever since zoning was adopted. So I think the focus really needs to be on Penardville.
So to be clear, that the round one grant could be a two-year grant that would run through June 30th, 2014 to focus on Penardville, we could follow that up with a one-year grant under round two.
To do the county.
Expand it to the county farm, okay, I just wanted to be clear.
Either, either expand it or to do something completely separate.
Sure, yeah, understood, yep.
Any further discussion on the motion? I'll take a vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any abstaining or against? No, I think that was five zero then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
And we'll look forward to your grant submission. It's coming up seven o'clock. I want to do the public hearing at seven, Sue. And I know if I invite Chief O'Brien up here, he'll, he'll be here for what, the next 20 minutes?
If we quickly just move forward, make a motion. One of them's easy, there's only one bid, right?
Just affirmation.
Sue, go ahead and take the first couple of items on the town administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your weekly meeting schedule is in your packet, it's, Tuesday is a sewer commission meeting, also the ad hoc finance software committee meeting. Consensus folder tonight includes accounts payable and paywall warrants, employee status reports for parks and recs, seasonal hire, fire department nighttime EMT resignation, and also, it's not in your packets, but there's an event permit for Memorial Day Parade on May 22nd.
Motion to approve.
Twenty, twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth, I'm sorry, I can't read my writing here.
I have a motion to approve the administrator's, excuse me, the consensus folder, was there a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero.
Thank you. You also have assessors' recommendations, elderly exemption, map six, lot 17B dash 103, an intent of a timber cut on map nine, lot 86, a report of a timber cut on map four, lot 513, and a veteran's tax credit, map 12, lot 11, current use application for map seven, lots 10, 10 dash 1, 8 dash 2, and 8 dash 3, and a current use land use change tax lien release on map nine, lot 97 dash 4, and map 10, lot 4.
Motion to accept the assessors' recommendations?
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Adams, it was aye?
Yes.
Five zero.
Thank you. And lastly, an acceptance of a temporary license for drainage installation on map 21, lot 27.
And a motion on the temporary license for drainage, map 21, lot 27, it was Selectman Navaz.
Second.
Selectman Adams, okay. Those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero again. Come on up and, because seven o'clock is a.
Walk slowly.
Walk real slowly, seven o'clock is approaching.
Well, you can give us the background in the meantime until seven o'clock comes.
Would you?
This is the vote, right?
Chief, would you give us some background on a proposed ordinance and then we'll go into public hearing?
Certainly, this is the second public hearing on a change to the ordinance which would supersede the previous ordinances that were dated September 12th of 11, December 4th of 89, and February 20th, 1979. This would, this new ordinance will prohibit parking on the west side of Prospect Street.
Yes, sounds simple. This board has discussed that street many times. Well, my clock says it's seven o'clock, that's right, thank you. Thank you.
So Ivan is here? Hey, you're on TV now.
In compliance with RSA 4114B, the Board of Selectmen announced public hearings that were held on the 23rd of April and this evening, 7th of May, 7:00 PM, Town Hall, 16 Main Street, under proposed parking ordinance on Prospect Street. A copy of the proposed ordinance is available online, and we just heard Chief Sullivan give us a synopsis of that, and it's available in the administration office. And being seven o'clock, the notice was also posted in the newspapers as I announced last week to union leader. So it is now seven o'clock and I open the public hearing. Were you here for that public hearing, Ivan?
No.
Thank you. Then, no one here to speak to the public hearing, then at 7:01, Catherine, public hearing is closed. And this board will make a vote on the proposed ordinance concerning no parking on the west side of Prospect Street. We'll make a vote on that in two weeks. Thank you for assisting us in this ordinance. Thank you. Are you prepared, Chief O'Brien? Our next agenda item is Fire Chief Rich O'Brien, and he has several bid awards to discuss.
Good evening, just to backtrack a little bit, back in 2011, the fire department applied for a 2011 FEMA Assistance to Firefighters grant for installing fire sprinklers and diesel exhaust removal systems in Stations 18, which is on Church Street, and Station 19, which is on Mast Road in Penardville. The, the, the grant was awarded to Goffstown, actually in the first round of, of over 30 rounds of, of awards that went, went across the country. So we're very fortunate in that grant, grant award. We're awarded for the entire project of $200,000 to complete the project. That also included a ta, a 5% match for, for a cash match on, on the town side. Since then, we went out to bid for both of those projects, both for the vehicle exhaust removal system and for the fire sprinklers. We received three bids for the vehicle exhaust removal system, from, one from the Air Cleaning Specialists of New England, Air Industries Incorporated, and Clean Air Concepts. The, all of the vendors submitted, submitted paperwork, submittals, and proposals, most of them are in order. The one that goes under recommendation would be to Air Cleaning Specialists of New England for the amount of $46,975. Any questions on that one? No questions, I can proceed?
Nothing from the fire department rep here.
No, fire department reps over there.
I'm sorry, parked, yeah. But I remembered your off-duty role here.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
No, I've already talked to the chief about this.
Do we want to act on these separately or make a motion on?
Separately.
Separately. Thank you for the reminder.
I'm sorry, speaking out of turn.
You'll be doing a speech if you're.
Memorial Day speech coming.
I won't be here.
Be in New Jersey.
No. I'll be in New York.
Any further information or is there a motion for this award?
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid on the Air Cleaning Specialists of New England for $46,975.
Second.
I have a question on the chief.
So before we have a vote, would you? Yes.
I figured I have to have a motion and a second, get it on the table, if I could ask a question. You only received one?
We received three bids for the vehicle exhaust removal system.
Okay, all right.
All right, no, no, we're. Received one on the other one.
We're, we're discussing the vehicle exhaust bids.
So we received three bids on this?
Correct. Those in favor of the, the motion, indicate by saying aye, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Yours?
Yeah, aye.
Five zero, Catherine.
Okay, the second, the second one was for the fire sprinklers, again, for Station 18 and Station 19, and we only received one, one bid. Again, we, we vetted several companies in the area that might, might be interested in, in it, and we received one bid from Hampshire Fire Protection Company, I believe they're out of Lunedary. The, the proposal was, was complete and met the specifications that was put together by Lieutenant Connor and, who had, who had a lot of experience in regards to sprinklers and installation of sprinkler systems. And with that, they, they, they submitted a bid of $126,735.
Selectman Navaz.
We have grant money for this?
We have grant money for the, for the, for the handle, the entire project. If you add up the two numbers together, it's $173,000 and change. We have a total of $200,000 to get the project done. That also, the money, the $25,000 or $26,000 and change that is remaining will help pay for the excavation, for installation of the water line to go to the sprinkler system. Again, that could be done by DPW. It also includes any incidentals that, that come along in the project that we may stumble across to complete the project.
Are you comfortable with only having one?
Yeah, I discussed this with Lieutenant Connor, and again, he's an expert in the field, he's designed sprinkler systems in the past, and he's very comfortable with a company like Hampshire. We've dealt with Hampshire in many projects in town and they're very competent and they've done apparently a very good job.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not questioning that, I guess I'm just questioning the fact that only one came and there's several competent sprinkler companies, and I mean, I understand Lieutenant Connor's expertise on that since he did the one, worked very much closely on some others, and I just, for the two stations, this is for 18 and 19.
Correct. He felt the, the bid was probably in, in, in the ballpark of where most companies would bid if they were to bid.
And would you summarize for us the benefits of having that sprinkler system installed?
The benefit of the sprinkler system is protecting some of your, your, your most critical infrastructure you have in town. Unfortunately, just last night, there was a, we got notification of a fire department in Illinois, I believe it was, that had a fire and destroyed all the apparatus and the fire station in one event, and it's basically put that town in a, in a pickle. That would happen here. We would, we would be in a position where we would lose possibly millions of dollars worth of apparatus, we would lose critical equipment and, and information that's, that's located in our stations, and it would affect the response times until we get the station and equipment back on, back on the street, so.
Would this change the status of the second floor of the building in Penardville?
It would, it would.
In what way?
Right now, we, right now, would, because the, the size of the, the general room on the second floor at Station 19, it was in violation of the state fire code because of the occupancy load that it had the potential to hold. Because, because of that, we had to reduce the, the size of that room by putting up, but a wood wall would partition down the center of it, reducing the size so it would only accommodate 50 or less in that room, that training room upstairs. By putting sprinklers, we'd have the opportunity to open that wall back up to accommodate a larger event, whether it be a training event or, or something else that perhaps somebody wanted to use.
Assembly usage?
For assembly root usage, correct. So there, there's definitely a benefit in that, that regard.
Thank you. Any further discussion necessary on the second bid presented by the chief? And did we already have the motion?
No. I already, I asked the same questions. I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion that we accept the bid for the sprinkler system, and that was, what was the name of the, it was?
Hampshire.
Hampshire Fire Protection, yeah, of Lunedary.
I'll second it.
And that was a bid for 126. And that was a bid for $126,735. $126,735. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How much does that match?
Our match is a five percent match. So, whatever the total project costs at the end, it's a five percent cash match.
He has.
And that was placed in the budget at the last minute for this year, so additional money was to cover that.
Congratulations, chief. And there's a little bit of room there for those contingencies, should they occur.
I'm sure we'll be able to, we may have to use it depending on exactly, for example, we just don't know until we start laying pipe, what the conditions are in putting that pipe into the buildings. I know for Station 18, Lee Minnick assures us there'll be no issues, but again, Mast Road could be another issue. So, we'll see.
Okay, just a poll question. Is the installation part of the 126, is that?
Yes.
That pipe?
Well, no, the pipe is above and beyond.
The pipe from the water main?
The pipe itself is going to be covered by Hampshire, but digging the hole to set the pipe in is going to be covered by us.
Good to know we have fire protection for our fire protection.
Just, no, one question on the grant. The in-kind match is Public Works's work.
Actually, it's going to be, it's got to be a cash exchange match, okay? So, for example, when DPW does the work, we've asked Carl to track that and actually submit an invoice to the fire department in the sense like we, they submit an invoice to like taking maintenance issues on with fire apparatus. So, at that point, we can track how much time and material that he's done on the job. That's great.
Chief O'Brien, you're also going to introduce us to grant funding training.
Right. Actually, this item really doesn't require any action by the board tonight. We press may need some action later on in the year. The New Hampshire Fire Academy, along with the Department of Safety, has come up with some one-a-lifetime, they call it one-on-a-lifetime grant funding, where they have $4.4 million come available for training.
How much is that?
Four point four, four point four million.
Four point four.
And that's to be used for firefighters in fire departments across the state. And it's to be used to provide technical rescue courses, rescue skills courses, trunk rescue courses, hazmat courses. And there's a list of them here supplied to you. And typically, a lot of these courses are forty, eighty, one-hundred-hour programs. And on top of that, they're pretty cost prohibitive to some, for some departments to send people to because you have to not only pay the person while they're taking the class perhaps, and/or the cost of backfilling them while they're off-shift up at the Fire Academy taking the class. Under this grant, again, it's a once-in-a-lifetime, where not only this grant will pay for the course, it'll pay for the salary and the wages of the person taking the class while they're up there, and it pays for the backfill of the overtime that we have to cover the shifts. So, it also includes for our call firefighters. So, while they're up there taking the class, we can pay the call firefighters their call wage and get reimbursed by the state. We will be tracking every hour that is used while our members are up there getting training, and we're tracking all the overtime for backfill while this occurs. And we'll be, we're tracking that with the finance department, and we'll be submitting a bill towards the end of the year. I would suspect probably October. With that, the state will process the funds and then get the revenue back to us. Reason why, you know, we don't need any action right now, what will happen is we will be paying these folks out of our overtime line and out of our wage lines to accomplish this. So, you'll see a draining of those lines while we take advantage of this grant. But on the other end, you'll be seeing revenue coming in from the state at the end of the year. So, depending on where the fire department's bottom line is on its budget, we may or may not need an emergency transfer from one line to the other to cover it.
Am I correct, there's no further action on this board? Is it your decision to send a full-time or a call member to the training, and you're alerting the provider of the training that the student is there under these conditions?
Correct. Right now, I think today, I believe, five or six of the department members were up at the Fire Academy.
I saw three today, chief.
Yeah, no, more. So, we're taking advantage of it. Again, this opportunity came real quick on us, and we, our members jumped on it, which is fantastic. The only stipulation I give to our members when they're applying for it, especially the full-time ones, that we have to make sure we have coverage, you know, so I just don't want them, you know, banning the department, you know, the town while they go to training and leave no coverage. So, but a lot of the call firefighters are stepping up, and others are stepping up while they take the class.
I'm sure the Fire Academy only has so many slots. Is there a projection on how long this money is going to be, these funds are going to be available?
It has to be spent by September.
That's rather quick.
Yes. $4.4 million in six months is pretty aggressive, and they're committed to make it happen, and if they're willing to spend the money.
They can force that many students through the academy. And, well, of course, they're covering the back salaries, too.
Correct, correct. And again, they're
Backfill, backfill salaries.
Backfill. And the estimated high, or they said conservatively, on the backfill money, so I think there'll be plenty of money to maybe perhaps offer a few more classes towards, in September, to cover the rest of it. But it's quite a, if the Fire Academy can get all these classes off and in the timeframe and spend the $4 million or so, that's something to applaud them for.
That's $4.4 million statewide.
Statewide, statewide.
I'm sure the instructors at the Fire Academy are real happy about this.
We are.
Plenty of students.
They're utilizing every instructor possible to accomplish this task, and so far, so good.
Thank you for briefing us on what you're taking advantage of in your fire department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The class today at the Academy was confined space rescue.
Thank you. Yeah, we covered everything up to our 7:45 agenda, which is Selectman's Discussion. Covered all your items from administrative points. We'll move on to Selectman's Discussion owed Business, which is the first item, is our 2012 Selectman's Goals. Specifically, having reviewed the goals, should we make assignments and develop a review schedule? Oh, I'm open for discussion on that subject.
Mr. Chair, I mean, do you want us to go down each one and then just start attaching names to who's going to own it?
We could do that.
Is that what you want?
Yes.
It looks like the only one that's been assigned so far is the first one.
The first one is participation in the collective bargaining.
Right.
It feels special. And Selectman Adams has already been nominated for that one.
And you've probably assigned B, right?
I am.
With your assignment, as a chairman?
I'm going to take care of Human Resources Ad Hoc Committee. Performance evaluations. We're going to continue that later this evening. And discuss the mechanism for doing that in the actual report forms.
Can I make a suggestion on that one? I don't know if that one really should be assigned to a particular individual. I think that's something that should be pretty much ongoing for the full board.
So, we'll leave it as it's stated.
Full board.
Full board.
And I think possibly, probably D also.
And when we take up that item later in the agenda, it's, we'll be discussing the process for doing those.
Okay, good.
The other item under Human Resources is the compensation of our town employees. And that'll be, once again, a full board discussion.
Could board members let me know if they're going to be taking a vacation on any meeting night? So, because I don't want to have a presenter here without a full board, and we're going to have someone from LGC come down.
How far out are you looking?
Well, we're going to do the, sometime in May or June for the LGC to come down.
Okay.
We have, we have the
Last week in June, you're out?
Well, we have the last Monday in May, which is Memorial Day, and I but the, that's, we're closed that day here.
Right.
So, we won't be having a meeting that night.
It's Mark's BlackBerry.
Don't have to worry about the battery dying on me.
The one meeting, I, will be the 30th of July. I'll be out.
For myself, Sue, that Monday, July 2nd, I'll probably be out of town as well.
Is it July 2nd, the Monday?
Yes, sir.
That's not so bad. That's a bad one.
Yeah, that's the one with the holiday, a lot of people. Yeah, I'll check.
It's a good one to bail out on.
Do not have a meeting then?
Yeah.
Yeah, really, it is.
Yep.
Any motion on it?
No.
No, not yet.
Out of order. I have to overrule the chair.
Veto.
Thank you.
And the other good thing about this, only Scott, doesn't cost me an extra $30 a month.
Especially when you leave it in the car.
I'd like to, part two of our goals, dealing with communications with the public. So, speak up as we go down through that. Item A.
We may be able to put Twitter or Facebook on A, one, maybe.
Yes, such as, the media that they would just use for communications. We could modify that depending on our review of the social.
I'd like to nominate a letter D for the chair. Well, it makes sense. I mean, you're the one who would schedule that. We do it every year. That's the all-boards meeting? I mean, Sue, are you responsible for some of these? Because technically, I mean, that's your letter C. She can be reading summaries. No, I mean, I'm just, no, well, technically, she is responsible for all of them, but
Well, C and D will continue. They'll be under my name in coordination with the town administration.
Now, I guess the question is on letter E, which is the Board of Selectmen or their designee department heads will author a monthly column, and we talked about that, and, you know, how do we want to kind of tackle that one? I mean, sometimes, if you set up a schedule, it's not always good for the department head for a variety of reasons. Maybe that particular time of year is not something that they have to, they don't have anything to communicate on, whereas they really need to do it at a latter time, you know, later time.
Depends on the programs that are being offered and
I know myself and Derek are going to work together with the new, with the next Economic Development Committee meeting coming up. We're going to try to put something together in the Gofftown News and probably even in the Man City Union Leader to get the people of Pernodville involved with what you heard tonight. We want to try to bring some change to Pernodville, but as we all know, change sometimes is met with resistance. But if we can educate the people, bring the people to the meetings instead of having the meeting here, go to and, you know, have a meeting here, a meeting there, back and forth. I know we're going to try to put something in the paper for that, for that meeting, so that, you know, it's a start.
When Mr. Maritz, Rose, and Derek Horn were discussing that, I noticed that in that grant, five percent of the funding in that grant had to be used for outreach of activity with residents or businesses that don't normally participate in local community planning. And that goes along with what you were just saying.
Yep.
How, that's a hard, not the crack.
Correct, it is. I guess, I'll take E, we'll start and, you know, I mean, I don't mind that one.
Well, you know, my plan, I think, would be probably a good idea at some point in the summer as the Fire Facilities Group is kind of winding down and getting, you know, then I think it would be appropriate to kind of maybe report out, not just here, but maybe in the paper as to what they did. But in some cases, we're pretty fortunate, too, because the newspaper is, has been generally pretty good about getting, doing articles on issues. And that could range from police department things, or fire department, ZIP Code, they were very proactive on getting information out on that, so
But this is a monthly column. If you're going to do a monthly column.
You have to have content for your monthly column.
Exactly.
Could
If you're going to make that commitment, I would like to see like a few of them right up front done, so that
Right. And I foresee this being primarily the designee. I mean, I'm not going to pretend to write an article for DPW. I'm going to go to the department head and say, draft an article for me. You know, and I'll bring it forward, and, you know, so that's kind of the way I foresee that process working. But I agree, we need to set a schedule, otherwise Could the board, could the board also be happy with the fact that this could be an averaged monthly report? You know, such that there could be four releases within the next four months, but they may be in months three and four.
I'd say nay, because typically, the newspaper, if you embark on that, they're going to want to say, okay, we're going to, yeah, we're going to put it on the second and fourth publications. What we're going to do every month, they're going to put it on, they're going to schedule it in and give us a certain amount of words, and then they kind of, they give you a certain section of the paper for that. So, I think we have to kind of commit to, maybe come up with a list of, started off in June, and then who wants to go, you know, what departments will work with each other? So, you think you might have something by June?
Well, our next, the EDC meeting, the next meeting is scheduled for June 6th.
Right.
Which, I mean, it's
Then what I'd like to do is nominate Phil to do the next one, because by then, the Grassmere Town Hall will be done. That'll be a nice way to get publicity and talk about all the work that went into that. That'll be
Which one?
For, I'll be for July, right? Because you should be done by then.
Well
Right? So, you can work with HDC to come up with something.
Yeah, hope, yeah, I can work on it, but I don't really want to have a deadline. No, part of it is because
I don't want to have a deadline, I sit all the time at work.
Thank you for accepting that assignment. And the Selectman Adams, perhaps
But I don't have a deadline.
July, when it sounds like.
Mast Road will be, you know, the drainage work will be done on Mast Road, presumably in the next month. And that'll, that's a significant milestone leading up to just the paving in August.
So, he'll take, so Kyle will take August. I'll take September for the fire department.
Just that, summarizing all the drainage work and the benefits and
He also needs to
October, I'll take it for the tax rate setting.
November, we budget
What was September? September is Scott for the Fire Ad Hoc Committee results.
October would be tax rate setting. November would be, would that be budget prep?
Tax rate is essentially a budget activity.
That's the same thing. Police, do we have anything in there for police?
Yeah, maybe something on I Neighborhood, how that's going.
Halloween Safety Day.
That's October, instead of tax rate setting.
You said you wanted it far out. You already got July and August, right?
Well, we've got October tax rate setting, announcing the tax rate.
But do you think that the newspaper would do that? I mean, they're going to do that, right?
They're going to do that anyway, probably, yeah.
So they would do the-
You want to do Halloween Safety Day instead?
Yeah, maybe talk about the history of doing it, I think it'd be an interesting.
Okay.
Now, we used to have Halloween on, we used to follow Manchester and have trick or treat on Sunday, could be the week after Halloween.
That was Phil's, that's a fame to fame, right?
Yeah.
Bringing it to the whole, to the real day.
Halloween Parade?
Well, August is open, right?
No.
The parade, too?
August is DPW, July was HDC, June was EDC, September was Fire Department.
Later in August, would you actually include the paving?
Right, right.
Well, we want to just, we got the next one, two, three, four, probably should do one more, November and December, two more.
The, park normally has-
Yeah, parks and recreation.
The park, they normally have a release.
He, he has an ongoing-
Ongoing, really.
So it doesn't lie by any-
But, but, but it doesn't, right, Carl, so it doesn't really always address some issues that may be impacting the parks, I mean, wouldn't-
It's more program oriented.
Right.
Yeah, right, right.
But in terms of vision and like, right.
Overall, the partner operations and-
Right, aspirational, so maybe Parks and Rec.
I think that's appropriate, sure.
Was there a month open?
December.
Police chief went to driving tips.
December, you'll be right in the middle of budget.
Yeah, probably another budget, yeah, budget.
December for the park, I don't know, it's kind of a slow month for outdoor activities at the park.
When?
December.
Ice skating.
Yeah.
How about budgets for December?
Yeah, budgets, yeah, that makes sense.
Budget for two thousand thirteen should be, well-
I'm sure there'll be another controversial issue we can talk about.
Yeah.
Maybe help the swap fills Grassmere Town Hall for December, it's not ready yet.
Sue, would you summarize the months in sequence and the subjects?
Sure, June is EDC, and that's Selectmen La May. July is HDC, and that's Selectmen DeVancea, on Grassmere.
Yeah.
And August is DPW, update on the Mass Road, and that would be Selectmen Adams and the DPW Director. September is the Fire Ad hoc Committee, and that's Selectmen Gross. October, you can do the Halloween Safety Day, tie it in with Halloween itself and the hours and-
Cemeteries.
And Halloween Parade.
You know, we had, one trick or treat we had, we had a, a thing up here at the, at the Common. No, it was up at the Common, it was a haunted, a haunted walk. We used to have the, the Moore Hospital, it used to be the, you remember that?
I think the Moore Hospital's gone.
They had a haunted house, yeah, and it was, the haunting on the Common.
Where were we on the list, Sue?
Okay, well, we got, that was October, November is Parks and Rec, and December is budget. Well, what specifically on Parks and Rec, the improvements to the parks?
Well, no, I mean, what's there more aspirational, the improvements to the parks?
Plans.
Plans, yeah, the, the property that was bought. My other thought was, maybe, do we keep, maybe we get one from cemetery, because we will have a lot done by the end of the summer.
Can we do that with DPW, since cemeteries fall under DPW?
Sure. Yeah, I just, I mean, I think they're always trying to get their message out, and that would be a good idea.
August.
It's the vision for the expansion area.
Right.
That's gonna be two to three years before it's available, but what, what is the schedule for doing that and making an article out of it?
Yeah, no.
Have discussions with Carly, maybe other issues that we can roll into it as well, so. With the projects planned for the expansion area this year, he'll have a better idea what the future is, is, you know, how the progress will go later this year. Okay, item F. Monthly, a monthly television show. Oh, boy, yes.
Well, I think you had talked about doing something twenty minutes before the meeting.
You gotta get an answer on that, though.
Who are you waiting for an answer on?
It'd be Dick, because-
Oh, okay.
David was here originally when the idea was brought forward, I was under the impression that he was gonna talk to Dick about it, so.
Talk to Dick.
Okay.
So, Sue, go ahead and research if that's available, and then we'll discuss that in the future as to allocating topics and periods. Item G, each department will survey residents, communities every three or five years.
Sue, have you done one here?
No.
Town Hall survey, would you be interested in maybe trying to tackle that, to seeing what people think of, you know, Town Clerk's Office, the planning, you know, you know, that, trying to get, whether it be electronically, Carlos was saying Survey Monkey or something, where we can kind of get a, because I don't think it has to be-
People usually pop in, like, last week, someone popped in and had just words of praise to the Town Clerk's Office, that he had registered the state portion in Nashua, and then he came down here, and it took twenty minutes, and the clerk, Karen, I think, laid it on him, and he just had nothing but praise, and he actually stopped in to tell us that. But, no, we, we don't have anything, usually people don't want to respond to anything.
You're envisioning that this, say, for the Administration Department, could be an, an online survey that would be available for a whole month period?
Correct, or, or, you know, quite honestly, you can make an argument that it could be an ongoing, meaning that, you, let's use an example, Mark. Mark does an inspection, when he's done with his inspection, he hands them a survey card, or says, please go online.
Yep.
And so, and you just collect the data over the year, and it is something that just kind of stays up there. Same thing, there could be just, you know, notes that are posted, where people can take a slip of paper, you know, what'd you think of our service, take, you know, please go back online and, and fill this out, you know.
Or, dealership I bring my car to for maintenance, routinely, three days after I'm there, they'll call me.
Right.
Please, you know, with, how did I?
I'm just saying, there's different manners in which you can, you can kind of conduct a survey.
If we're gonna do it, we should probably do a stuffer like in the tax office, too, so that people know that that survey's online.
Right, I'm just saying, I, I, I mean, we haven't surveyed, you know, Town Hall, so maybe that's one that we try this year.
Well, I, I like that suggestion, and, but it's, Sue, you would need to talk to our IT department on how that could be displayed, and how the answers or questions would be compiled and collected, and-
Yeah, that could go up on our webpage, tell us, please tell us how we're doing.
Talk about the, how long these records are gonna be retained now, that we're gonna collect on the survey.
We've done like a, one question, yeah.
You've done them on the website, yeah, yeah. What'd you, what'd you think of the two fifty's was one of them?
Why?
Yeah, who's gonna be in charge of it? Overseeing those records, so that when you have to go-
He caught up on what I just said.
Yeah, that's where they had it, they had it on, they had it on the right-hand side, it was, it was an, they had a website poll.
Yeah, this one, website poll, do you watch GTV, Channel sixteen, Channel two, twenty-two on Comcast, daily, weekly, monthly, never, vote. So, we have occasional-
Let's see what the details are.
You want to see the details right now?
Yeah, let's see them.
And is there a box to provide comments, specific comments?
Daily, five percent, weekly, eleven percent, monthly, eight point nine percent, never, seventy-four point seven percent, number of voters, seventy-nine.
So, out of seventy-nine voters, three quarters of them never watch?
Right.
Yeah.
How did they know where the survey was?
That's the, that's the internet, they're talking about GTV.
On the town website.
And is there, there's a comment box where they can make specific comments?
Not in this one.
You could probably do that, yeah. Wait, you read some of those, probably, right?
Well, hey.
Forget this didn't work.
But occasionally, he puts different questions up, like, if he put one up on, our new, our website's been redesigned, how do you like it, and-
What do you think of our new phone system, right?
Let's get all the kinks out, yeah, first.
Yeah, I know, tell me about it. I've got people calling me because they're frustrated calling this system, so they call me, that's what they claim.
I've enjoyed it, because I only need to know one number now.
Yeah.
And then I can punch in the three-digit code for all the stuff.
You need to know all, all the extensions.
You don't know them already?
What I need to know, I'll call you.
Okay. I'm not on the extensions, though.
Okay, I'll look into that. It's two G. Two H, making it easier to interact with the town.
You know, this one's interesting, in, in the sense that it almost requires, like, each department head, you know, what, you know, what phone calls do you get, or what are the, that you get where people want a form, that's one. Or two, what are the hits that we see a lot on, because, and that we can get like that, from, from Neil.
Yep.
But my question is that, we, although we have the form in a PDF, can we possibly, like, let's say somebody wants to do-
Like the volunteer application form is interactive.
Right, or, and I don't know the Fire Department, but if you wanted a burn permit, right, could you fill out that burn permit, like, online, like, almost like an email, send it to the Fire Department, and then they would then call you to schedule an inspection of, say, a, of where you're gonna burn, or a fire pit that you want installed, or something like that, I mean-
It could happen.
Right. Rather than somebody having to physically come down and get the form.
There are some departments around that now do that.
Yeah.
There are a lot of legalities as far as, you know, you can fill a permit out, but actually, do you own the property? If you don't own the property, you've got to get a letter, you know, there are-
Well, let's say, like, Parks and Rec is, maybe that's another one, where it, could you fill out, you know, you want to sign up for tennis or something, could you simply fill it out online, and then just, it goes there, and you don't have to actually print it and then drop it off?
Our website can do that, we did, we did that with the volunteer application forms, so we could do that with programs.
Sure.
Sue, I'd recommend on H is, in your departmental sessions, continue to endorse the, you know, the activity that the department heads would pursue, those interactive web-based forms.
Meeting this week, as a matter of fact, that's very timely.
Well, I mean, and that goes to, like, tax assessors.
Those are subjects, I think, the department head should have the initiative to, to put in place, and we're encouraging, just, by that goal, we're encouraging them to do that.
I got done, wow, that was so fast. Play Selectmen packets on town website. That's the fastest thing we've ever done.
Yeah.
Thank you, Select former.
I didn't need to be trained, it worked.
Paragraph three was project management, there are a few large projects that we do have oversight and involvement in. We've stayed in touch with Mass Road Drainage, we've had weekly reports on that. DPW will soon be starting a drain, drainage project, once again, storm drainage, running parallel to Pine Ridge. Road, Pine Ridge Road. We do have a road program that encourage, involves work on many other roads, and that would be an approach, perhaps, Public Works needs to bring up the date later in the summer as to the status of all those projects. It's more than just Mass Road and Pine Ridge. And Lynchville Dana's, the grant that we had for water hookups.
We can get updates from Mark.
It's been quite a few months since the town staff briefed us on that. Any, you know, any remaining grant money that, in homes that may be considering that. The finance software, we already talked about. Fire station improvements, we already talked about. Selectmen Gross's favorite subject here, barned land redevelopment.
No, it's a second, I mean.
It's a second one?
What was my first?
The other one's two fifty's. Right.
It's high on my list, too.
Picking on me. The guy who makes plastic columns is making fun of me.
He isn't, huh?
That is, once again, the Park Commission will be bringing that forward, and we'll be monitoring that progress on that land's development. Item B, under three, is, is just a, covers all other activities, and is updates periodically by our department heads, or the Selectmen's Rep, and and on the committee reports, and I think, you know, that, those are the Monday evening updates we do for the committees. And once again, those are a real executive level summary of what this board needs to know, that the various committees have acted upon. Moving on to paragraph four, which is our goal for budget activities. We have the, the oversight of the expenditures for the 2012 budget, and that's ongoing all through the year here. I can't remember that we actually had any monthly review by the full board. I know we received the reports by the Town Finance Officer.
Yeah, Don sent them to us.
But we don't, the board, in, here, doesn't necessarily, we, I can't remember if we actually discussed how that is progressing.
I think the only times I've seen it discussed is if there was some kind of anomaly in the report.
So, we all receive monthly analysis from Don Burr, and the status of the expenditures this year, and, and revenues, and they're coming in. And so, if any board members note something that they wish to have examined, bring it to us here, Sue and me, and, and we'll see that a presentation can be done about that. We have a, for continuing on budget oversight for the current year, should there be a ten percent deviation from the budget expected at any particular time, the, the department head would alert us to that in a timely manner, Sue? Budget preparation for 2013. We meet with the budget chair to discuss the budget process and establish ground rules, collaborative meetings. We've started that with the Budget Committee, that was the meeting you missed, Selectmen Gross. And we indicated, if I recall, the committee wanted to sit in on when the department heads were presenting their initial budget desires to the board.
We'll be here on Mondays.
They would sit in with us, and it's an opportunity, we'll allow interaction at that point, too. The second bullet was review budget goals prior to the CIP submission. That's something for you to schedule, and Sue, bringing department heads in here for their CIP submissions.
Submissions have already gone forward to planning, if you want me to have the department heads in here next week, or do you want to just see a list of the submissions?
I like, I'd like the board to see a list of what they have proposed.
Have all, have all, each Selectman Rep or department received what their department submitted, no?
No.
No.
Okay.
Was it next Tuesday, seventeenth of May or something, we're starting Fire, that's the first night for CIP, we're starting that night, I think Fire's the first one up on the, on the agenda as well.
Yes, so, I've, I've had discussion with the Park and Rec Department on what they're proposing of CIP, but I haven't had any inkling about what the other departments may be submitting, and that's a good opportunity for you to-
You had admin.
Bring us up to date.
Yeah, you had the admin submission.
And later in the year, we will be discussing the special and separate articles that would be appropriate for- that would be appropriate for the warrant in next March. Paragraph five, town committee members provide onsite training opportunities.
Yep.
The right to know. We done, we did that. And develop recognition programs. And I believe we've.
Did that one.
Voted on that one. We have concluded. Any further discussion necessary on the status of our goals, we can come back to that.
Ongoing.
Ongoing subject. Sue, thank you for all the rewrites you've done on that document.
No problem.
Guiding us through it. Does the board want to take up these items in the order they're presented? We have a snow plowing subject to go and evaluation forms. Any desire from the board, which one we take up next?
Those are go in order.
Go in order. Okay. Snow plowing. The subject is, the town in the past has done plowing of church parking lots based on activities in the past that there's been a.
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, I think we should state that the town has done certain church parking lots.
Yeah, clarify. Thank you for the clarification. Certain church parking lots based on the, that there's benefits perceived through that public benefits. And it's useful to continue, but we were, the issue is, should we continue with that practice and do we need to re-justify the benefits? And we did have one public comment this evening.
We also have that letter.
Yes. We had also a letter from Episcopal Church Reverend Epsom.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You know, I, I had a chance to look at the article, the, or the article that was written by attorney Christine Fillmore at the LGC. And, you know, I'm, you know, she is not our attorney. She's the local government center attorney. So she provides guidance to municipalities. Ultimately, if a citizen were to file a lawsuit against the town of Goffstown, Attorney Drescher would be defending us. I've, I thought about this a lot over the last week. And I've jotted down some notes, but I think ultimately, and we can have a discussion tonight, I think ultimately, we're going to need Attorney Drescher's opinion on this. Because if I, if you can indulge me, in nineteen ninety-three, the attorney for the town of Goffstown by the name of Richard Fredette provided a legal opinion, which was not in our packet, but prompted the selectmen back in nineteen ninety-three to discontinue the practice. And he stated, and in the letter, it talked about how the board of selectmen was faced with a difficult decision. And that based upon, I'm just going to read it. The board of selectmen is faced with a difficult issue that involves, this is from nineteen ninety-three, by the way. The board of selectmen is faced with a difficult issue that involves plowing non-public areas. While your organization is an important part of the social fabric of the town and provides valuable contributions to the quality of life in Goffstown, the town's legal counsel, Rick Fredette, has strongly recommended that the selectmen cease plowing all non-public schools and churches. The important principles of separation of church and state and due process that are part of the US Constitution, along with the New Hampshire Constitution, leave the selectmen little choice. It is the intent of the selectmen to provide the same level of winter maintenance that has been provided on your property in the past through the spring of nineteen ninety-four, but the town will not be able to provide winter maintenance after that date. The board recognizes that your organization needs an adequate timeframe to budget for these, these services from a private contractor. It is possible that a suit by taxpayers could immediately force the town to cease plowing those areas that are currently plowed on the private driveway, private property, I'm sorry. Is the hope of the selectmen that this notice will give you adequate time to plan for the winter season beginning in the fall of nineteen ninety-four, when the town will no longer be able to provide winter maintenance on your property. And then subsequent to that, there were, in nineteen ninety-four, there were, there was a change. Letters were sent by various, the various churches and the entities that were involved, explaining the public good that they do. And then in nineteen ninety-four, April nineteen ninety-four, the board voted to rescind the letter and then to provide services to three entities at the time. St. Lawrence Church, the Villa Augustina, and the First Baptist Church, which is now the church that Sean Henry Bridge wrote. And that was on a four one vote. Then.
But it was also subject to.
Subject to, that's correct. It said, subject to continue to supply services traditionally provided. I'm sorry, that wasn't it. I'm sorry. To recognize community services of the Villa, St. Lawrence, and the First Baptist Church and to continue snow plowing on a service to service basis. Is that what you're referring to?
Well, also, we had to get the waiver liability.
Right. That came a little later. That came later under.
Now, I don't want you to think this is a complete history.
Right.
Because our minutes between ninety and ninety-five are not electronic.
That's difficult for you to, right.
Yeah. So we have to.
So then, you know, in our packet, we've, then we've got what towns do what? And the town of Bradford does do it. It's a parking lot that is, in terms of plowing for a church, quid pro quo, they do it because the town hall and the library used that parking lot. Hampstead, it's used by, the parking lot of the church is used by the school and other municipal buildings. Merrimack, Tufton Borough, Dunbar, and Ware, New Boston, Hooksett, and Bedford do not do it at all. Guilford does do it, but there's a memorandum of understanding listed in theirs. And one of the public benefits was that the community actually votes in their build, in that, in the church. It's an emergency, emergency shelter.
Shared driveways.
Shared driveways. And then Meredith, it's used for public parking in their village.
Right.
And then I guess DPW gave us a breakdown of what the costs would be.
Yeah, and his caveat is, this is an estimate.
Right.
Because we're not snow plowing right now. No one took the time to do.
This, in our packet, estimated annual costs, is that a recent analysis?
Yes.
This was, okay. So, you know.
Last week.
Many of these documents were twenty years old.
Right, no, this is recent. Yeah, I should have dated it. This is right from Carl. And it is an estimate.
So I, Mr. Chair, if I, if you wouldn't mind, I mean, I jotted down some questions, which maybe Attorney Drescher could maybe think about, if we go that route, or we could think about. Are you okay? You want me to stop or want somebody else?
Well, I, I don't necessarily want to turn on Drescher, just with the blanket statement, what do you advise us? We need to, if, we need to advise him what direction we're heading or what, how we perceive the public benefit is. And then he would say, you've got a good case here or a weak case from, from the legal standpoint.
If I may, Carlos, for one second, and then I'll turn over. Here's what Fillmore says in her, and again, I don't want to, it's always tough when you take one paragraph out of context, but she basically says, given all of this, if a municipality wants to spend public funds to plow class six roads, comma, private roads or private driveways, either by using municipal equipment and employees or by contracting with someone to provide that service, it can only do so legally if one, each owner of the plowed driveway and each property owner along a class six road or private road pays the town the cost of that service. And two, this plowing is truly subordinate and incidental to the needs of the municipality's own highways. See Clapp versus Jaffrey. She, in her last. All citizens to provide a purely private benefit for a select portion of the citizens is not legal, no matter how small the amount. So that's what kind of jumped out, jumped out at me. And then when I looked at, you know, the public benefit, there are churches and nonprofits who provide public benefits either, you know, all across the board, but we only plow a handful of, of these. And then it makes me wonder.
If a new.
If another entity.
A new organization comes along.
Came along, then, then, you know, so, and then again, it makes it very difficult to try to manage it. Like in IRS guidelines, you receive, like, right now, and I think was mentioned last, when Mr. Meany was in here, and I think Carlos, you said it too, is that these organizations reap the benefits of favorable tax status because they are a church. So ordinarily, they might be paying five or ten thousand dollars on their, on, on the church. But they're not doing that because, because the IRS tax code recognizes that they give back to their communities through food pantries and outreach and helping others and hosting different events.
I have a comment, a follow-up to something you say, and I, I'll turn it over to Selectman Avanza right now.
Well, I just wanted to bring up when, one of the things that Joan Stevens brought up was about the food pantry and working with our welfare department. One of the things I have to say is that we've been able to operate the town on a very, very low welfare budget. And I think if you compare that to other communities, our welfare budget is very low. And one of the things that our welfare department does do is work with the food pantry, which really offsets us having to provide food for the recipient. So that's one thing you have to keep in mind. And I mean, if, I couldn't tell you exactly how much that is. I mean, a lot of information that we have is.
Confidential, so you can't.
Right, it's, it's confidential, confidential as to how many people have gone over there, how much food. That I couldn't, but I know it is substantial. And it's been an issue and, and it's been discussed many years when we go through budget process and, and welfare issues.
The point I wanted to make is you brought up an attorney's letter that mentioned organizations paying inappropriate.
Fee.
Fee for having the services provided through their public works department. I, I have problems with that in that the government, which is, you know, our public, Goffstown, should not be in competition with private vendors offering those services. It very easily could be perceived that we're, we're taking opportunities away from them for earning income. We're, that's not our role. I don't perceive that as our role.
If I could just follow up on that, what you're talking about, I think the only time it's appropriate for us to do that is when we are doing, we are providing that service to a road subdivision that we have not yet accepted, which we do, we currently do. And I think that's.
Through conditional.
Right, that, that's a different, that's a different reason, because that's a process that that development is going through to become a public road.
Selectman Adams.
I, I agree. I think we need to get an opinion from Attorney Drescher, but I also agree, we, I think we need to give him some sort of a sense in which direction we're leaning, so that he can tailor his response. So I think we need to take a straw pull and figure out which, which direction we need to tell him we want to go in. And personally, I'm inclined to go the other way. I mean, you know, when you look at these estimates, we're talking about twelve thousand dollars a year for snow plowing and trash removal for, for these types of facilities. And I think when you look at the different organizations that have been highlighted in Reverend Exner's letter, I mean, they're significant. And they're not limited to any particular group, things like Crispin's House, the food pantries, and those, the clothing pantries. They aren't limited to anybody. I mean, I, I just think that's short money. And I think we can justify that we're getting tremendous benefit back from these groups in exchange for twelve thousand dollars a year worth of services. That's where I'm inclined to go. And I, you know, I believe in that, I guess, but.
Well, I'm inclined to go the other way. And my, my heart tells me to agree with you, Carlos, but my mind is telling me that if we get sued, that we would not prevail. And there's a couple of reasons. I mean, I have a whole host of things that I jotted down, you know, that I thought about over the weekend. And that is, we are picking and choosing which, which organizations we are providing the service to. There are many organizations that do good deeds for the community and that do not reap those same benefits. So just as we all recognize what a wonderful thing St. Matthew's Church and all of our churches do in town in terms of giving back to the community, the Historical Society is an example. That's, it's a nonreligious entity, but they, they're preserving the historic, historical significance of our community. They must budget for their own plowing. We have the Odd Fellows Lodge that gives ten, over ten thousand dollars, if not more, back into the community for a whole host of reasons. They help with kids during Christmas, the kids who are needy, and they do that. We have the Masons. We have the Lions Club, who gives back in terms of sight and hearing, free eye surgeries, hearing tests. They also give four thousand dollars in scholarships. They provide an athletic field for, for, for kids to play soccer and baseball on. So we have that. Then I struggle with the notion that, you know, this past year, we talked about Lamson Avenue, how we got a legal opinion, said we can't spend public money on private roads. So that's why we had to discontinue the services. And I don't see this as, as really a whole lot, a whole lot different in, in my mind. This policy seems to favor five or six entities who provide valuable services. But what is the criteria for another school, church, or nonprofit to receive these same town services? And, and I think that should the Historical Society come, or the Lions, or the Masons, or Jehovah's Witness Hall on Daniel Plummer, or any other church, what would prevent the town? What, what would we say to those entities to say, no, we, we don't think that you're worthy of it, but these four or five are? How do we reconcile that there are probably, you know, Bedford, Merrimack, Hook, you know, Hooksett, all these other towns? They all have churches. They all have synagogues in them. They all have quality nonprofits who do all the same things that our generous churches and, and schools might do here, but they don't do it. And the other thing is that, last but not least, is I think, you know, we've, we've pushed for transparency of how money's flowing. We did that with Parks and Rec was a good example, where we charge a fee and then these people, and then, and then they, they, we charge a fee and then in return, we give services, et cetera. And that was on the rentals of the fields before. It was like, hey, you know, you know, can you cut the grass? Can you give me seed? And that just didn't work for the whole transparency thing. And it seems like that's kind of what we're doing right now, saying, okay, we have a very non-quantifiable thing and let's, let's do it. And I think it would be much easier to simply say, one, we're not doing it. But if we did do it, if we can show, demonstrate, and hypothetically, if we use the basement of a church for town meetings ten times a year, and then they charge five hundred dollars to rent it out, and then, then you can, then you can say, yeah, we have the right to use this facility ten times a year. Times five hundred dollars is five thousand dollars, and that equals the plowing. Then I think we can do it. Or if we're using a particular parking lot and we know that it's used for town, the, that I, that strikes me is that, let's say St. Matt's, for a long time, I don't know if we still do it, but library personnel parked in the St. Matt's parking lot. Okay? To me, then, then that might be the quid pro quo that you need. And then, then I can say to another group, well, they provide these parking spaces. I'm sorry, but you, you're in Pernodville and therefore there isn't that, so.
And I agree wholeheartedly with you. So we would go to St. Matthew's and say, we estimate, we provide two thousand dollars' worth of public services. Document for us in dollar value the services you provide back. People like the Lions Club, where, where does Lions Club have facilities or infrastructure that we, that?
Well, we used to, just by way of history, we used to cut the grass at Allard Field on the back road.
Yeah.
And we used to cut the grass at Lions Field. Then the town did. And then a few years back, as the town's properties kind of grew in size, the rec commission came back and said, you know, we can't do this any longer. It's a private, it's a private field. And we have so much else to do, we, we can't continue to do it. So we've heard Carl come in here numerous times saying that we're, we're accepting more roads, our routes are getting longer. It's almost the same thing. It's like we have a limited amount of resources, but yet we're taking longer to plow the public roads because we're plowing a church parking lot, you know? And I think that's a, that's another, you know, you know, issue that's out there. And it still doesn't get back to the point of, you know, and then you haven't even touched the separation of church and state issue, which was raised back in. separation of church and state issue, which was raised back in, in nineteen ninety-three, which could be, you know, the one that might trump all. I, I don't know. I don't know what Drescher's opinion on that is, but it, it clearly states here, but what is the public good? And I just don't know if the public good is simply that, you know, we have a food pantry. I don't know if that is simply good enough, because then the Lions Club could say, well, we give over fifteen thousand dollars back to the community every single solitary year, whether through, whether it be through scholarships, or through giving people, um, eye surgeries or hearing. And those are all things that happen directly to Goffstown people. They can come back and say, well, we're doing that, why aren't you doing it for, you know, why aren't you doing that for us? Or the Odd Fellows Lodge could say, you know, every year, we spend, you know, two or three thousand dollars on Christmas toys for the great, for the needy in the community. So we've helped the welfare department, just like, you know, the food pantry might have. It, it becomes, you're then becomes, we become a board of pickers and choosers, and, and that's where it becomes really difficult.
I'm, I'm going to add to that comment. Uh, I'm, I'm aware, because I, I help manage, uh, a food pantry in Pernardville. They're open Tuesday evenings and Saturday mornings. We have fifty, forty to fifty customers each session. No, no town services. We, we pay for trash, we pay for snow removal. But that's, that's part of that food pantry's overhead, and they are on our welfare officer's referral list. She, she, uh, she has that food pantry as referral. But we don't get town services. You know, it's, should we ask? I don't know.
It's just, it's just, like I said, and my heart wants to do it, but I just don't know how, um-
If, if we were to go and say, we're going to cease, there's no use to sending a letter to our town lawyer. It's open to shut case. If we were to send a letter saying, what do you advise us? I'll fall back on what I'd said earlier. I would like to see this board have an idea about what are, what we believe are the benefits. Now, either we can discuss that this evening here, come up with some black and white examples, or perhaps we could ask the organizations involved.
Now, you got, that's where I'm heading. You know, go to them, say, give us a dollar amount, and how you calculated that dollar amount, so we have, we can weigh it.
You know, one of the things that kind of came up, and I'll, and I got a, you know, I, I disclosed this at a meeting right, last year, and, um, you know, I disclosed I was a member of the Lions Club, and no, I wasn't happy about it at the time, when, when Parks and Rec discontinued, because I felt that it was difference of treatment. But I'll say this, is that faced with, and don't quote me on it, but I think it was somewhere between three to four thousand dollars to mow Lions Field, if not more, the Lions Club did not all of a sudden stop giving out scholarships. It didn't stop, you know, helping people who needed eye surgeries, or, you know, hearing tests, or doing the firefighter's challenge, or other, you know, community service events that, that the Lions do. So, yes, I think it's an adjustment, but it doesn't stop them from doing their, their core mission. And keep in mind, the Lions Club does not get preferential tax treatment already through the IRS in terms of not paying any property taxes or any federal income taxes. So I think that's where it's a level playing field for, for everybody. And I think in a unique situation where the town did not have a parking lot, um, yeah, then I, I think that's a different story. Now, could an argument be made that St. Lawrence Church parking lot is used during pumpkin regatta? Or the, I'm all ears for all these things, as long as you can almost say that, that, that's what this is worth, and you can kind of, kind of quantify it a bit, but it just becomes really tough-
Back in the Mother's Day flood, people were parking in St. Lawrence Church because they couldn't come into the village. So it was a community parking lot. But that was a very unusual event, an emergency situation.
I think I'm saying the same thing you are, Scott. Have them demonstrate to us with hard figures what the value of it is. I mean, so at least have something to discuss.
But it's the, what do you think, but it's the value to what? That's, that's where I'm going. Do you think, Carlos?
Is it to the value, to the town of Goffstown? You want to see a municipal value.
Municipal, not just the community, because that's why you get preferential tax treatment. That means, that makes you no different than the Odd Fellows Lodge, or, it's, what is the value to the town of Goffstown, if that can somehow be quantified?
And notwithstanding the union leader's editorial that there's-
Oh, the prayer, you know?
Value and prayer. Echoes down.
I mean, I think it speaks volumes that the one-
There are newspaper editorial a few years back, about Virginia, there is a Santa Claus. Union leader was almost on that point, too.
Yeah, I didn't understand that thing, but, but I think, you know, to me, when you, when that list of towns was provided with a vast majority of them, don't do it. I mean, to me, that speaks volumes. And the ones that you did provide the examples, it was because the town didn't have a parking lot, or the town, you know, was a shared driveway. I mean, it was like, it, it was like, kind of like a no-brainer one.
I hear two people saying the same thing. I favor it. Uh, what about the rest of the board here? Should we ask the organizations that are on our list of services?
Well, let me just say, I think that what we're asking is also some information that Sue probably hasn't been able to find in here, because this, this type of discussion has come up over the years, and as it's mentioned, you know, it's just in minutes, certain places in the, in the minutes someplace, and they're not electronically searchable. So that's tough. I mean, this has, and, and-
It may have been information available to Selectmen, but it's not part of our records, unfortunately, how that, how the, how a previous board was persuaded to say, yes, there's X, Y, Z benefits.
Yeah, we don't know that.
Well, only-
There's only three of them.
That decision in ninety-three was based upon the three that responded, and there may be more information-
But then it morphed into more, though, because the three-
Right, but there, like I said, I didn't research all the records. This was what, what was in the file.
Right, I mean, it's very possible, like Sue says, that somebody brought something in. It was brought up to the Selectmen, you know, on the, like, new business, at a meeting or something like that, and there was a discussion, and you're not going to find it on-
Until we scan all those packets and-
Yeah, you, you go through all the minutes.
I think the key point is that what is the benefit to the municipality of the town of Goffstown versus-
Does everyone agree with that?
That's just my opinion.
Is that, is that have to be the public benefit?
But it also includes-
Value to the municipality.
Yeah.
We, we have three heads saying yes.
Okay.
So-
I think you have four.
Four, maybe five.
Because that makes a difference in how you frame the letter.
It's a huge difference.
We need, uh, Sue, please prepare a letter.
Sure.
Because every single one of these groups, I mean, we have, we probably have fifty to a hundred groups that serve the greater good of the Goffstown community, easily.
Old Business, item three, evaluations of our departments.
Carl found the one that I did. That's the one I did. I couldn't find it anywhere.
Sue, do we have-
From last time.
Couldn't find it.
Oh, really? I don't have it electronically, though.
Neither can I.
Would you recap which departments are in our packet here tonight, Sue?
Okay, your first one is the one that Carl submitted, and that was the one that was drafted several years ago by Selectman Gross, when we went through this whole process then, uh, putting together things from different templates.
Right, so what I did there, just so everybody kind of knows, is that I plagiarized the, um, school superintendent evaluation that I had a copy of, and I took those components, which I, which I thought might be relevant to a department head. So that, the first one was, um, their administration-type skills, and that's, some of that stuff, Carlos, is very similar to what you-
It's all really similar.
Yeah, these are all kinds of things. Then the next one was the relationship with the board. Um, the next topic was relationship with the staff. Now, that might be difficult to try to ascertain from, say, our perspective, but relationship with the community, personal qualities, and then, uh, financial. And then, on the last page, you would talk about, you know, their greatest strengths, the areas of needs of improvement, and then any accomplishments they might have had in that particular year. So it's pretty much like what you provided us, Carlos, you know, it's, it's very similar, a lot of it.
And I, I agree with any of them. I think the important thing is it needs to be a graded scale, not a yes or no.
Right.
And I agree that if, if you're exemplary or you're deficient, you're at either end, you need to provide a specific example as to why. Because you have to justify why you find somebody exemplary or sufficiently deficient, uh, in their, in their responsibilities. I think that's all perfectly reasonable, and, you know, when you provide an opportunity for comments from the evaluator, responses from the person who's being evaluated, uh, identify goals, so that they can make improvements where they're deficient. Uh, and then you agree to it, through a signature, and, you know, you set forth, um, you, again, identify goals and what you're going to do to make improvements and achieve those goals. Maybe taking courses, it may be whatever it is, but, you know, a specific course of action to make improvements. Uh, I, I mean, I think that's basically what needs to be embodied in any evaluation, and I agree with you. A lot of these, you just change the words around, and they all look very, very similar.
So picking up on those comments, the, uh, the next example we have is with fire department.
And that doesn't have the gradient.
It has criteria-
Right.
-to be examined, but, uh, it's either a yes or a no.
Yeah.
So you would prefer having a, a scale.
I agree. Met, not met, does, to me, doesn't say anything.
Like, one to five, like, one to five.
Right.
Right, but met or not met is yes or no. It doesn't mean anything.
Right, right. You have to be, once again, you'd have to have comments-
Right.
-one way or the other.
I mean, you know, that person's a good employee, and so is that one, but that one's a lot better employee, but they both meet the goal.
And I, what I like about what you said is that when we review this, and it'll be in a non-public session, if there's a disconnect either amongst any one of us and/or of the department head themselves, they're going to provide the example. They're going to say, I think I am here because of this, this, and this. And then, I mean, I don't know about you, I've, when I've done these things, I've changed my mind. I'm like, you know what? You're right. I, I, I forgot that, or, um, or in some cases, it's the other way around. Maybe it's somebody who thinks that they did a lot of these things, but then-
You remind them of what they didn't do.
Or that, you know what, that's what's expected for you to do. That's not, you know, extraordinary.
Now, just remember, just remember, when we review the Parks and Rec director, the Parks and Rec Commission expects the Parks and Rec director to work as many hours during the week as necessary to do his job.
And the point is?
It's a diff, it's a different standard for Parks and Rec director.
Is that still in there? In their job description?
I don't know, but that's when we, we asked them. That's what they, how many hours-
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah, okay. You're bringing back a flash.
The next example we have in the package, Sue, is, is that, uh, the, really essentially a one-page, uh, police department, where there were four criteria. So the criteria is getting real short, and, um- Yeah, not as, not as broad in scope as the other examples that we've had.
But what's not necessarily, though, is when you look at some of these budgetary skills, that was, you know, kind of the finance piece. That should probably be in everybody's management skills, you know?
Yeah.
Public relations, that's how you deal with the community, and, and then, you know, planning, so there's a few, would morph into it.
Some of these criteria here, it's called responsibilities and expectations. It could be very similar to the other examples we've had.
Yeah, I don't like the police, chief of police one at all.
No, I wasn't.
Bottom of the barrel. What-
Good job, Phil.
I won't go there. Thank you. The, uh, but it, help me here with the rest of the board. Are there fire department and police department responsibilities that are mandated by law?
Fire department under RSA one fifty-four. I don't know the whole un, underlying RSA, but you look at the RSA, there are certain things that, that governs the fire chief. You'll do this, you'll do that.
Police chief, same for-
And, and public work.
And, yes.
Yeah.
Public work.
Yeah, so, I mean-
And police.
Your answer to that?
Yeah, I mean, probably so, almost everybody.
Should some of those aspects be covered in here, or, or are they expected to be performed?
Well, I think it's a category, you know, adheres to state statutes and local ordinance, or however you want to describe it.
But I, I think always-
Well, it, mostly. But I, I think occasionally.
Sometimes.
Never, well, I mean, you can rate that, just like any other.
One sixty-
One fifty-four. One fifty-four, four, I believe it is. Fire chiefs, fire wards.
Yeah, organization of firefighters.
There is, but as you go through that, I mean, it gives you, basically breaks out board of fire wards, fire chiefs. There's several different categories in there.
So, so the categories, do they comply with all applicable statutes? And if it's always, that's great. If it's not, then there's a, there's a deficiency that needs to be corrected.
Did you find the fire chief under there, Scott?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking. I, I wasn't in the RSA itself, so.
But even one def, that key's, even one deficiency needs to be addressed, and so the plan of action would be-
It's one fifty-four, colon, five. Fire chief, fire ward, engineer, or fire chief. I'm assuming that's it.
Yeah, that's it.
So even one failure to comply with a state statute would, is a deficiency. You'd identify that. The course of action would be direct the individual to review RSA, blah, 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 to be more, come more familiar with it. Have they done that? Yes. Okay, goal accomplished. That way, that way, the next, the next year, if we come up with the same problem, now we've got a recurring problem with an employee who habitually, or chronically, I should say, doesn't comply with state laws. And so there's, you know, you're building, what you're doing is you're building a case for action, disciplinary action at some level or another.
Pretty generic. It just says, I mean, I'm just trying to read through some of the lines here. "The chief fire ward engineer or fire chief shall be technically qualified by training or experience and shall have ability to command firefighters and hold their respect and confidence." And then it just goes on. In this, in the police chief, it's, it, you have, it's removal by cause, and it's, it's, and it's really more about that, that suspensions, and who can do what, and-
Right.
I'm assuming that, I think the police chief is the exact same way.
Yeah, with the responsibilities comes protections.
Right, exactly.
Moving on, we have a proposed, uh, evaluation for town administrator. Once again, it has, uh, six different, or seven different wide areas of, uh, evaluation, each one with sub-criteria.
With a scale.
And with a scale, and an opportunity for comments. And finally, a draft for Park and Rec. And once again, it has, uh, uh, I think four major areas of cri, of activities, and then subcategories under each one with a, a scale. Okay, I, I, I mentioned, um, in a prior meeting that I'm, let's see, is that, what's the other one? Oh, this is the one you provided, Selectman.
Yeah, but it's similar to all the others.
The state one?
State one.
Similar to the others.
And then the LGC one from there.
You know, one thing about the Parks and Rec, which I, I guess is modeled after the Town of Peterborough, is what I'm understanding here, is it does get to this whole thing about goals. Prior year's goals, were they achieved, or were they not? What? And then new goals. Expect date, how's it going to be achieved? I mean, I, I think that's an important part of this whole process. It's the only way to improve employees and their performance, is to identify goals and set standards for how those goals are met.
At the end of the LGC one, they have the goals and objectives, and it has action staff by the employee and action staff, so the supervisor-
Where's else? Is that the last one?
No, just before the state one.
Just before the state one?
Yep, in my packet, anyway.
Oh, I got the Parks and Rec one before the state one. After, yes, I, I need help on, on the organization. We have Park and Rec.
Yeah.
This is the LGC.
The one that starts Town of Goffstown exempt staff?
Yes.
That was modeled, you said, off of-
That's LGC, yes.
That's LGC?
And you, you put in Town of Goffstown as a title. With the upside-down logo?
Yeah, what happened there?
Strange. I didn't do it.
Is that a call for help?
I have no idea.
No, it's not upside down. It's reversed.
There it is.
Yep.
That comes from years of looking at clock faces on the backside.
On the inside.
Based upon my, my experience, the states, the one that you provided is the most contemporary of the ones that we have here. Basically, it talks about, it, you slot people in based upon, like, behaviors, and what your, you know, um, the management performance appraisal. When it, it, it's specific. Let's just use, I'll go to page, let me see here. Trying to figure out which one would be a good one. On page three of fourteen, and the title's called Open Communication. It goes for, you know, so if you look at the one that's the lowest one, below expectations, it gives you a paragraph to try to make it easier for the, whoever's doing it, to say, "Okay, this is, this way, you can say, 'Okay, unable to conduct meetings or interacting with other managers appropriately, fails to respond to requests for information, does not keep others informed.'" And then when you move up, it just, it slightly changes them to the point where all of a sudden you get to someone who's exceptional at conducting effective meetings, seeks interaction with other managers and staff, and actively enables open information. So that's like the highest level skill. And then you have everywhere in between, so it gives you the ability to slot somebody in at average, slightly better-than-average, but a little bit below average, very poor, or exceptional. I mean, I think, and the five, the five gradient way of doing, I think, is excellent.
And also, in each of the categories, it gives you an opening statement that tells you what the category is all about.
Right.
And then it tells you how to evaluate. And it looks cumbersome at first, but I'll tell you, having dealt with this for many, many years, it's pretty easy. I mean, you can walk right through this.
Yeah.
The other benefits on how those criterias were explained, the expectations, is that if one were averaged, you would say, "We're doing okay." Is when you're above average or exceptional, that's when it helps the managers allocate a performance bonus, if that would be the case.
Or the other way, if it's a two, why there is no...
What actually has to change in the expectation?
Yeah, but there was also, there was also no increase, you know, substantia.
Or slight increase or something.
Right.
Okay, point I started a moment ago. We have five department heads. I would, I would prefer similar, a similar set of criteria for the department heads, and a similar ranking of expectations for each of the criteria. Picking the best of all these five or six or seven examples that we have here, and maybe a wild card criteria that would be finely tuned to the particular department. Is there a selectman who would like to composite that draft?
Well, I was, can I make you a suggestion? Why don't we each go back to our department?
And look and talk to...
With that, this one here as the guide, and try to work that one into this one, and then come back, and then we go to that point, you know?
My gut instinct is that the one that Carlos provided us is going to work for all of our department heads for probably about seventy-five percent of the evaluation. Then we're going to have to tailor the remaining twenty-five percent for the fire chief, another twenty-five percent for the police chief, for DPW, because they are different jobs.
Right.
But general things like administration, they all handle administration. They all plan. They all do things with budgets. They all...
Right, they all put the budgets together, they all...
They all have, they all have a certain, whether it be decision-making, that's, they all make decisions. They all have to...
Communication skill.
Teamwork. It's all, those are all universal.
Right.
And if you read the instructions, it tells you there are some where it won't be applicable, so you put NA. And it also says, if they're below expectations or the highest rating available, you have to provide specific examples of performance.
Yeah.
So the instructions kind of, so I think the idea of bringing it to each department head is saying, you know, "Take a look at this."
Yeah, and go sit down with them, right.
Yeah.
The other good thing is that the state has already invested time, money, and energy into this, and I would think it's a defensible document, in the sense that...
Oh, believe me.
Right. So, I'm going to say, that's important when you're doing these things. It has to be defensible.
Yeah.
Alice, could we get this in electronic format?
Yeah, I did. Apparently, I didn't send the link through properly, but I'll try it again.
Yeah, it sounded like it was an intra.
Oh, that's right. It came off the Intranet.
Yeah.
Oh, that's...
I couldn't get into it.
That was the problem.
Yeah.
You're not in a special group, so...
Well, can you, is it permissible, if it's Intranet, is it permissible for you to, no, you...
I can call HR if the state knows.
And the form itself is a public document. Obviously, the evaluations themselves aren't available to the public, but the form...
Right, the form.
Maybe HR will send it to me.
Yeah.
So...
I like it.
All right.
Sue Lang.
Yeah.
Sue Lang?
Sue Lang.
I mean, summarize then. The action is to take the six factors of evaluational, how many, on the state management form, fourteen, fifteen factors.
I thought it was seventeen.
That's a lot more than that.
Yeah, there's more.
Forty-two.
Seventeen.
Thirty-one.
Ooh.
Twenty. And then you have this up to twenty-four.
Right, and I think that's what we need to focus on. Don't touch the twenty-one that are there. Don't touch them. If it doesn't apply, you put not applicable.
No, but the thing, what we need to do is, is take the one from the particular department head, redo the one from the department head into that. Just make sure, basically, if you go through all the things from that, from that department, and see how it fits into that.
If the functions and criteria that are on these department evaluations, how do they dovetail into these twenty-one?
Okay, for the sake of time, I think if we went through this, we can go through it very quickly. If you can, if you tell me that you don't think that verbal communications does not apply to every one of them.
No, that's, that's not the point.
Absolutely, it does.
But I'm saying, as you go through, I think all twenty-one apply.
Of course they do, yeah.
Now you have to add a few that will be specific.
So, that's our homework. Go back and look at what needs to be added from the specific examples brought forward by our department heads. And we can relook at this issue on a next board or future board. You'd like two weeks?
I'm meeting with the department heads this Thursday. Do you want me to give them a copy of this, so they can...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. I was going, yeah, I was going to go to my department head with it.
That's perfect, yeah.
Okay.
Unless I give it to him before that, or...
Potentially, this will be another agenda item in two weeks. Selectmen's discussion, new business.
Question. I wanted a follow-up from last week on, came on the committee report, and I didn't know where you wanted. You want it on the committee report? It's not in here, but it's a follow-up from last week. I didn't know if you wanted to do it as old business or just on the committee report.
You're on it. Finish out the thought, please.
Okay, no, it's basically, yeah, I talked about HTC with the, about the sprinkler. It appears that everything is okay as far as the, the funding for the sprinkler system. And I just wanted to have the board approve that. The HTC voted to expend up to thirty thousand of that, the actual amount. The actual amount we're looking at with the work being done altogether is twenty-six, five, seventy-five, but there might be, you know, there might be something that comes up in the hookup or something along that line that might be extra, because Public Works would be coordinating the installation or the hookup from the main to the building with the water precinct.
I'm going to expand on this. I was with Selectman Davanza for an hour in a meeting with some of your contractors and the historic district commissions.
Well, yeah.
Okay, I saw sprinkler heads all over the place. What is different in what you were just explaining?
What we're doing is, we're completing, is about twenty-five percent of the project has been sprinkler.
There's been pipes of input?
Yeah, heads are in, right, okay? About twenty-five percent. This completes the rest of the entire building. This will tie the sprinkler system in because the, you know, the discussion we had with Mary Lou was here, and I did talk to, I did talk to the electrician, because the electrician was there, that's installing the fire alarm system. They will all be interconnected and...
Connected with who?
No, the fire alarm and the sprinkler system, they're interfaced. They interface together. There will be one panel, the Mary Lou panel that they are responsible for.
Will go away.
That panel goes away. There is a new panel. We picked the location for the new panel. The way you explain it to me, the zone or zones from Mary Lou just go from their existing panel box into the new panel box, okay? That gets tied directly in, you know, to dispatch and the way everything is done from the town. Then there is the portion, as how the chief mentioned with the hookup there, from the main to the building. That's a separate hookup, okay? This one with Carter does not include that pipe installation. That's going to be between Public Works, be doing the work, and the water, and the Grasmere water precinct.
And maybe you can pick up, but it is a separate main because the pipe feeding the sprinkler system is a larger capacity pipe. It is obviously just not a three-quarter pipe.
It's a six-inch, right?
Correct. Oh, yeah, yeah, they do a pressure test. Everything's on the plan, and they, yeah, they...
Depending on the size flow, it's needed, either four or six-inch pipe. A riser will come from the street up into the building, OS and Y, which is your valve.
So it's just not a normal, everyday residential feed coming in?
Oh, no, no, no. And you can check with Chief O'Brien. I think the Manchester Water Works is charging us twenty-eight hundred dollars on the, on the Station Nineteen sprinkler project to cut into that. I mean, so, yeah, it's not your everyday three-quarter inch line. This is a cast iron pipe that's...
How much did you say they're charging you?
I believe for the Mast Road, around twenty-eight hundred dollars.
Summarized all your sprinkler issues.
I had one question. In, okay, I remember years ago, I think it was at Mountain View Middle School, somebody kicked the ball, hit the sprinkler system, and like, the thing went off and it ruined the whole floor. And so here we've, we've put in so much energy into this. In terms of the sensors, what do you call it? The head itself?
Sprinkler head, yeah.
Are they like, how does it work? Are they recessed when, if somebody hits it, or is it?
The ones in the main hall are recessed up into the ceiling. The other ones, there's different types.
Probably, it could be a standard head like this.
Well, I'm saying, standard heads like that, if you kick them, I mean...
No, there's air. There's air in them. There's no...
No, 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 but...
If the ball hits it or something.
It's charged with air, but once that air is expelled out of the system, the next thing coming is water. There's no...
Right.
My concern is that in a Mary Lou preschool setting, you know, is it possible that all of a sudden somebody kicks a ball into unintentionally and hits a head?
Well, they, they do have a protection.
Cage.
There's a cage. There's a cage that's built...
And I understand that. I just was wanting to make sure, is that part of the design that you have, not in the historical part, but in at least Mary Lou, where we know we're not going to have some kid inadvertently, a ball goes up. I'm just, I've seen too many claims where sprinkler heads have kind of gone off accidentally.
We'll, we'll address it. We'll address it.
Thank you for bringing that up.
So if I could...
Give me a motion or something.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we authorize the finalization of the sprinkler, sprinkling the Grasmere Town Hall with John L. Carter. His amount is twenty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. And not to, you know, I'll leave it at that for now.
And just spend this from the capital reserve fund.
Right, correct.
I'll second that. And this has been approved by the HTC?
HTC approved up to thirty thousand.
We're both agents of that fund, that's why.
All right, but I just, I'm, they approve up to thirty thousand because this does not include the hookup.
I hear you.
Okay, so, as long as, I guess, everybody's comfortable because there's no other expenditure...
Stairway, stairwell, and you're done.
This includes the sprinkling of the stairwell.
No, 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 I'm talking about the exterior.
Oh, you mean the addition on the back?
When this is done, and then addition it on the back with the elevator.
I mean, summarize here, this is what price number five was, the amount that he just read, twenty-six thousand seven, five, seventy-five, which is completing the sprinkler for the rest of the building that exists at this time. The next phase would be the new addition.
Right, that's...
And whether that amount of money is still relevant, whenever that's done, that's probably another issue.
That's a different issue, but I'm saying, they voted to cement up to, you know, up to thirty thousand to include this, which has some addition.
Do you want to get the vote to not only include the John Carter expenditure of twenty-six thousand five seventy-five, but also...
Right.
Some more in case you have any additional cost for the hookup?
Correct.
I'm going to change the motion.
Okay.
That could be...
He changed the amount, right?
Well, to include the John L. Carter for twenty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-five, and...
You're going to put some amount in there.
Because you wouldn't have the authority to dispense it.
Well, I would do the difference between the twenty-six, five seventy-five and the thirty thousand that the, because HTC approved up to eight, thirty thousand, right?
Yeah, not to exceed thirty thousand for incidentals.
Okay, do the difference between those.
Catherine, do you have the motion there?
Let's see if I can craft this.
Thank you.
You want to have the motion to state that the board of selectmen will authorize the finalization of the sprinkler at Grasmere with John Carter. Did you say?
John, John L. Carter.
John L. Carter. Do you want to use Carlos Adams' phrase of not to exceed thirty thousand or to name a figure in the difference?
I think you want to do John L. Carter at twenty-six thousand five seventy-five.
Correct.
And then up not to exceed three thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars in additional cost.
Three thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars in additional costs.
Contingency.
Or contingency.
Or contingency.
Or contingencies. So it's part A and part B of that.
And I heard Selectman Gross second that. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Congratulations.
Thank you.
You have a project.
We'll have a meeting there soon.
I know Selectman Gross wants this meeting to extend to nine fifteen, but we're on our last item, which is a committee report.
Why worry about that? I predicted that?
Yes, you predicted nine fifteen.
Didn't even realize that.
Won't you tell them we're having a discussion on the Tricentennial?
Good. Committee report, economic development.
Scott, do you want the short version?
Yes.
The long version? I can get us out of here at nine fifteen.
Sure, sure.
Let me gather my paperwork here. Economic Development Committee meeting was held Wednesday, May second, was held here at the Town Hall. We did have election of officers. The election of officers, Steve Langley is now the new chair, and Charlie Tentis is the vice chair. This evening, you heard from the committee, the Metro Center New Hampshire and the New Hampshire Community Grants, quite a bit of discussion going on about that. We are going to try to move forward with changing the locations of the meetings to the Prenardville Fire Station. I'm not sure if the fire chief actually did give him the okay on that yet, but we're shooting for the, for the next meeting to be held June sixth at six-thirty at the Prenardville Station on the second floor. And the meetings, the meetings that we're going to attend or try to attend, the Metro Center meeting is going to be held May twenty-first between three and four-thirty at the Manchester Chamber of Commerce on Hanover Street. Myself and Charlie Tentis are going to try to attend that. We worked on goals as well, and that was pretty much it. We did have a quorum, and we, you know, discussed several other issues, which are all available on the, on the website for review.
We've completed the agenda. Any catch-ups or subjects you'd like to put on the table?
Motion or adjourn?
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.